Good evening. Twenty-second, twenty-second regular meeting of the Medford City Council. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Del Rosso. Counselor Falco. Counselor Knight. Counselor O'Conner. Press President Marks. Counselor Scott Pelley. President Carriello.
Please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to suspend rules to take--
Counselor Falco.
I'd like to make a, if we could suspend the rules to take 17-515 out of order?
Seventeen.
To the very end.
What's the number again?
515.
Seventeen. On the motion by Counselor Falco for suspension, seconded by Counselor Del Rosso, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Seventeen, five-one-five. To the Honorable President and members of the Medford City Council, City Hall, Medford Mass. Dear Mr. President and City Councils, I respectfully request and recommend that your Honorable Body approve the appropriation of certified free cash in the amount of $49,000 for Riverbend Contamination LSP services. The balance in certified cash prior to this vote is $8,239,829,329. The, Alicia Hunt, Director of Energy and Environment, will be present to answer any questions. Ms. Hunt, please. Mr. Clerk, if you would please note, Mr. Counselor Scott Pelley, his presence. Name and address of the record, please.
Alicia Hunt, Director of Energy and Environment, 41 Wasson Street, Medford. So I'm not sure how much background is helpful for the council. I know you all received the press release that was sent out about a month ago that contamination, lead, was found in the soil at Riverbend Park. That part of the park has been fenced off, and in order to take the fencing down, we need to do a series of testing, sorry, there's a weird echo on the mic, to do a series of testing, borings, to understand just how deep the contamination goes, what the contamination is and the extent of it, and then we can have a solution developed depending on exactly what is there. So in order to get that moving, so you will see there's money actually in my budget for next fiscal year to continue with this program of moving this project forward. However, the question that everybody wants to know is how soon can we take that fence down? And in order to take it down soonest, we want to begin the work with our LSP, the testing and the reporting as soon as possible so that we can determine what the solution is and then put us, and then come back and say, here's what the solution, here's what we're recommending to do. But we basically didn't want to wait until July to get started on this, but really get started as soon as possible on this work.
Do we know how long it'll take to actually do the testing?
So he said it would be about, he'd be out there like two to three days with the equipment. They're actually going to do borings. They have to go down 15 feet, but they would be small borings. And then it would take about on the order of two weeks to get the test results back. And then there's also a series of reports that have to happen at certain prescribed times with the state.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Ms. Hunt, thank you for being here this evening. I'm wondering if you can explain to us a little bit about what the contaminants are in the ground there and what you're aware of, the contaminants in the ground right there, because apparently it sounds like you're going to have to do a little bit more research to figure out exactly what we're dealing with, number one. Number two, I'm hoping you can also explain to the council a little bit as to whether or not this need for funding is in direct correlation to the extension of the clippership connector, or if this is work that would be done regardless of whether or not the clippership connector project was in the design stages.
Right. So to begin with, your first question about the contamination, what we found there when we did testing was lead and a small amount of arsenic. So we know that that is there, and we know that that is spread at the surface level throughout this area, which is why it's fenced off. When we say surface level, we mean the top eight inches of the dirt. So they take testing in the top eight inches and they consider that to be the surface. There could be other contaminants there. We honestly don't know where it's from. There are speculations around the fact that clipperships used to be built here and they used lead in that, in the painting of those. But we don't actually know, and part of this is once you know that there's some contamination, in order to design an appropriate remediation plan, you have to understand the full extent, the depth, what it is. They'll do a full suite of tests for more than just lead at that location to look at the whole area. Your second question was about the clipperships, so none of this actually had anything to do with the clippership connector.
And another question that I have, Mr. President, this'll be it for me. In the area that we're discussing here, was any of this surface level dirt, or was any of this dirt disrupted to make it surface level dirt? Was there any digging, excavation work or anything like that going on there that made this--
Right, so that was--
--contaminated product come up to surface level?
That was my first original gut question, because we did what's called two test pits in that area where we dig deeply, and we test, and we tested that soil in preparation for a different project. We were going to do a green infrastructure project, a project to clean storm water that we had a grant for, and so we did dig down to about seven feet and tested, and that's where actually we first saw the lead. And so when that occurred, the state said to us, you now need to test this whole area, the whole surface. So I know that there are two areas about this big, but the practice of the, the way the test works when they come back and they do surface level is they did a grid of 35 test locations throughout this entire section of the park, and they actively avoided those two spots of turned up dirt because they knew that that was dirt that had been surfaced by those test pits. So this is testing from 35 locations throughout this entire section. Sorry, did you have a second question on that?
So is it safe to say that the state is going to be requiring us to test and remediate this situation regardless of what's going on--
Right.
--in the area?
Right, so that's exactly it. So we were, as soon as we realized that there was lead in those two test pits, we said, we cannot afford, we can't do this green infrastructure here, it's not a good location for it, and so we suspended that project. But the state, we actually had to tell them that we had found lead because of the levels, and so they were the ones, the State Department of Environmental Protection, that said, here's where we want you to test, this is the grid we want you to do, this is the area we want you to test. We gave them the results from the surface level testing. They're the ones who said you must put up a fence, you must put up a sign that says contamination and keep out, you must now do this boring, this more extensive looking at the thing. They can spread this work out over many years, but it is our desire to not have a portion of one of our public parks fenced off for many years, so we would like to move the project forward as quickly as we can--
Public park.
--and not wait for, it's the, it's part of Riverbend Park--
Okay, it's Riverbend.
--and this, this part, I do, I did bring picture maps in case anybody wasn't sure--
That would be very helpful.
Sorry. So when you look at this picture, and this was up on the city's website, it was, went out as a press release, you can see the Riverbend Yacht Club is at one end of the property, at Ship Ave. And then this area, so if you were, so for people who are not looking at this picture, I would tell you that if you were standing at the Andrews School and looking at it and decided to walk down the right side of the school towards the river, so past its loading dock towards the river down that path, all of this is to the right of that asphalt path, to the right of the soccer fields. It's got condos there with big white fences, and so the white fences are essentially the property line, and then this is the area between those fences and the river. And it doesn't have any active recreation on it, like no kind of play equipment, but it is, we've been told by the condo residents that they use it for their children to play back there, and we know, we've observed huge numbers of people cut through there on bicycles, with dogs, with strollers, off of Ship Ave and into Riverbend Park and vice versa through there. So you can even in that photo see like a dirt path that's been made by people who drop, who walk through that area. People from that neighborhood are quite upset that they're not supposed to walk through that right now. So that's part of why we'd like to move it forward quickly.
And if, Mr. President, I could just ask the Director of Public Health, Ms. O'Connor, if she could explain some of the health risks that are associated with this type of contamination and what her position, what her office's position is relative to--
Name and address of the record, please.
Mary Ann O'Connor, the Director of the Board of Health of the City of Medford.
Thank you.
So, so lead is naturally occurring, right? And on most homes that were built before 1980, lead-based paint was used, and lead gas was in the air till the 1980s, so there's exhaust. So you're going to find in most cities that there is lead contamination. Children under six are most susceptible, obviously, to lead poisoning, and that's because their brains and the nervous systems are still producing so. But you can get lead poisoning through ingestion and through inhaling. And again, with children, you know, the fact that they're playing outside in the dirt, then coming in and eating their lunch and not washing their hands and putting their hands in their mouth, that's where the lead comes ingested. Now, this particular situation, there are certain spots that the lead is higher than others, but again, there's variations that contribute to, so there's seasonal variations, so when that area is covered with snow, you don't have any worries about being infected by lead. If you have nice grass, which most of the area does have grass, that's another barrier that you don't have to worry about. So really what you're concerned about is bare soil and kids playing in that bare soil and then putting their hands in their mouth and ingesting lead.
Yeah, bone particles.
Yeah.
Mr. President, my rest, thank you very much. Appreciate your help and understanding.
Counselor O'Conner.
Thank you, President Carriello. Can we just get a breakdown, how would the $49,000 be spent and what exactly is that going towards, and what are we looking at for, I'm sure we don't know exactly, but for costs down the line?
Okay, so, sort of thought you were going to ask that. There's several different pieces of it. Some of it actually covers some of the consulting that he's already been doing. So when you find an emergency situation like this, you, your LSP, they're a licensed-site professional, so we hire them, but they hold a license like many other professionals do, so they have to like do the right thing and not what their client necessarily wants them to do. So they come out and they start helping us with the testing, with the immediate response action. We had some of the testing that was, has already occurred, we've paid for, but then some of this consulting that's going to go into the reporting, they monitored us putting up the fence, they've been having communications with DEP. So some of that has already, some of it's happened, but there's--
How much did we expend so far?
He hasn't actually billed us. He's basically said, you know, I know that, you know, frankly, if he has to bill us in July for it, he will, but the preference would be to really get this moving. We don't want to delay this entire project. And so, sorry, I should have had it called up already. Here we go. So there's, I'm afraid to speak to the numbers off the top of my head, even though I know most of them. There's $12,000 for the report, the immediate response outcome report that is due at the end of June. There's $4,000 for the consulting that is, that goes into doing that report. Then there is two days of drilling assessment, all the labor, laboratory analysis, equipment, groundwater sampling, and well survey, and that's $27,000 and change. There's an IRA status report that's due August 22nd, so there's an immediate report that's due at the end of June. There's another report that's due at the end of August that's $4,500. So that, those two, the 27 and 45, are $31,586. And then the other, sorry, what numbers that I don't have in front of me were his original quotes to us.
So the $49,000 is really just to figure out what's what we've done so far and to figure out the extent of it--
Right.
--once we drill down to the level that we need.
Right, this is the characterization of the extent of the problem. Once we are clear on that, then we will work on developing a solution. And everybody wants to know, so what are you going to do about it? Because that's the natural, I want to know, what are we going to do about it? And so when I've talked to him about it, there are truly two things you can do with lead, and that is you can remove it or you can cover it. If we, you know, if this was a different location and we wanted a paved basketball court, that would be great. We would pave it, we would put a nice coating over it, would be wonderful. We're not doing that next to the river here, unfortunately. Removing this amount of soil and disposing of it because it's lead-contaminated is probably going to be cost prohibitive, although we've been talking about some ideas of mixing stuff to make it, make that you could do that. What we'd really like to do is maybe remove some of it, put down a barrier layer, and then put clean fill on top of it. And actually, we probably have clean fill up at the cemetery that we could use and would be a lovely way to dispose of the excess soil up there. Whether that's enough or not, we don't know, but that also has complications that we would need to go to Conservation Commission, they will need to approve it because it's right next to the river. This is probably going down to the river's edge, and then there's people's yards, so you can't just raise the level of the dirt and have water run into their yards. So there would need to be engineering to look at it, to figure out what's the best way to do this. But that's kind of what we're hoping, that we'll take some out, we'll cover it, we'll put some clean stuff down. And as you asked about the clippership connector, this part, frankly, putting a 10-foot wide path in would be just an area where we wouldn't need as much fill or it would be easier to cover for this section here behind these condos, but it's not part of this project.
What is the foundation, Counselor Knight?
It's my understanding that the design phases of the clippership connector have not been completed yet.
Right.
And there's now an assumption that it's going to go back behind this residence?
So this is perhaps, I should be clear, not one of the areas where it's disputed. If you see the dirt path in the ground there, those residents in general want to know, when could we pave a path? Some of them have strong reservations about where the other parts of the path are going to go. They don't feel it's right to disrupt neighborhoods for their neighbors, but they don't actually object to it back here for the most part. There have been a few neighbors who've said they, they don't understand, but you can see from that dirt path that people walk through there constantly, and I've been out there now because of the contamination and the rain, and there are people walking their dogs and biking through there in the rain, even on the nice, not just the nice days. So that is, I would say it's not in design. This is part of the location where the intention has always been to connect into Riverbend Park. So--
So--
But yeah, there is a design meeting on Thursday night at the Andrews School, so people who have interest or concerns or questions about the clippership connector, this Thursday at 7:00 at the Andrews School is a meeting that the DCR is organizing. I will be there, and the consultants, the design consultants are going to be there.
Thank you. Counselor O'Conner.
Can you just explain the 35 test locations, was there lead found at every single one?
Not at every single one, but at a liberal distribution of them. So there was no ability to say, well, it's not at this end, it's not in this corner. It was, they were done in a grid fashion, and it seemed fairly random as to where the levels were higher or lower. There was no clear pattern to it.
But the map you gave us--
That everything in that white--
Is contaminated.
--it was, they were distributed throughout that white area.
So then did we test further down, obviously?
We did not test on the other side of the asphalt sidewalk there, the path.
Right here.
So outside, so I think that line should be following the asphalt path that goes down between the fields and this area. And so the area from the asphalt path in has been part of testing that occurred when those schools were built, and there was actually a response action outcome in 1999 that determined it was a small amount of arsenic in that it was not of any kind of concern, and it was closed out. So because of that, DEP did not ask us to test on the other side of that path.
What are the cost estimates for this lodge of a piece of property with contamination? Two fix, two, any of the three options, I guess?
I have not, we have not really asked him for cost estimates yet because he keeps saying it's premature. If we find something else in there, it might change the answers. Frankly, in order to get cost estimates, you have to do a bunch of engineering and design work, and that costs money. So he really needs us to say, here's the prop plan, this is what we want to look at, and then set up a purchase order to pay him to do that kind of engineering and those, those sorts of estimates. That's not an off-the-cuff number.
So we're looking at the $49,000, then cost for engineering and design, and then the fix?
Yeah.
I guess my, my last question then, has, has there been any discussion to test, I mean, obviously, if there's just a small sidewalk, we would, you would potentially argue that there may be lead or arsenic in the lower section, are we going to--
On the other side.
On the other side of the sidewalk, are you going to, that's right behind the, I'm assuming, I believe this is the school right here.
And so those are the soccer fields, right? That path runs down along the soccer fields. So if you also see the soccer fields, for those of you who are familiar with them, are raised up. We understand that clean fill was brought in to that area, and like I said, they did testing in 1999. I have to tell you, my heart is always torn in a situation like this. I do not want it to cost the city more money because that's as money they can use for other things, but I'm the environmental director, and I want us to deal with any problems that are out there. But I'm not really trying to go looking for problems. It's, it's a tough situation, so.
Yeah, I mean, probably talking to the wrong person with three, three young kids, but I would just, through the chair, I mean, I would request that we do some testing. There's soccer fields, kids are there all the time, and it is pretty well grasped, but there are-- none-- back of the school where I'm not sure if they have recess, that some testing, and we need, because we can't do all this work and then just come to find lead a couple of years in the school and when we could have done it all--
So some of that, so that area, the other sidewalk, was the limit of work for where they did testing in 1999. We have copies of those reports where they found a little bit of limited arsenic and nothing else, and that's where they said it was not enough to be of concern to anybody. And they, the state at that time closed it off. Now, I wasn't here at that time, but I have copies of those reports in my office and the maps of where they did that testing.
And health, like Counselor Knight asked about the health concerns with lead, health concerns with arsenic--
Again, I--
For children especially.
Yeah, well, again, the same concerns about ingesting and, but the other exposure would be, have to be over many years. If you were walking on it, it would take many, many years of exposure that way to have any effect.
And it would do what? What would the effect be?
It's, it's--
Poison, basically.
Poisoning, so.
Obviously, at, in 1999, the state determined that the levels that were there were more like background levels and were not an amount that was going to be of risk to anybody even. So they have different levels that they have concerns about depending what the category of use is. So if it's a backyard, it's one level. If it's a park, it's different, you know, school, if it's a parking lot, you know, what's on top of it, you know? And so they approved, approved it, that's the other side of the park, the pathway, for school and park use. And I will say that some of the same people from the state have been looking at this and helping us to do some of the research. I am thankful to DEP because some of what you need to do, you would hire your consultant to do, is the background research on what is at this location, what's been done here in the past, and they've actually been doing a bunch of that research for us and feeding us the information so that we don't have to pay the consultant as much to do it.
Thank you.
I would just request that we do some test borings behind the Andrews Middle School as a condition for the paper. I think it needs to be cleaned up. We have homes, we have people living there, going to school there, teaching there. I believe the dog park isn't too far, going to be too far away. I think we need to just, if there's a problem behind that school where kids are playing soccer six months out of the year, I think we need to at least, I don't know how much the test location costs, 35 test locations, but I think we need to figure it all out at once.
Thank you.
It's a connected, besides that small pathway, it's a connected piece of green space that I think needs to be handled all at the same time. And I, too, I, I agree with Ms. Hunt, we don't want to go looking for problems, but when it comes to thousands of children's, children playing on that, on that field, I think we need, need to, we owe them to at least investigate a bit.
Thank you.
If I just might, so that you're aware, increase the price because they, related to the borings, I don't have an estimate on that, but it would probably have me requesting additional money. They had, so for the two days of the drilling, which is 20 soil borings in this, and four soil borings that are groundwater monitoring wells, and then all the tests that go with that and all that work, that was $27,000.
But the 35 test locations, I mean, I'm saying, even if we did 10, you know, five, two rows of five along the pathway, go in 20 feet, I mean, at least we'll know has come past that pathway, you know?
Those were the, the 35, those were the surface testing, so--
That's what I meant.
--those, in order of $6,000.
For 35?
For, yes.
So bring that down by a third, we're talking two grand, maybe test 10, seven feet.
I, I would have to confirm with them--
Yeah.
--and get an actual quote, but you're right, that the soil, the, the surface level testing is much less expensive, which is why we just did it with money that we had available.
Right, and I think $2,000 is money well spent just for peace of mind and for thousands and thousands of parents that are going to have children. 1999, 17 years, do the 10 tests for $2,000, and we have reassurance, but don't do it and you'll never know.
Thank you. Counselor Del Rosso.
President, thank you. First, I want to congratulate my colleague for expressing concern for the children back there, and I think that we should follow, quite frankly, I believe we should follow the schema of testing and not scaling back that will allow us to get a proper sample and do proper statistical study of the land back there. And if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. Mr. President, the people in this neighborhood have been under considerable duress over the whole issue of this clippership connector, infringements on their property, infringements on the security, not having an ample opportunity to discuss and explore questions, and not being allowed to speak for themselves. I would rather hear from them about their intentions of pathways and where they go rather than anybody else first. So therefore, they're now faced with additional duress in their living space because they're faced with ancient contaminants that have been there from the days of master sailing ships that conducted crimes in our community and around the world. This soil is clearly contaminated, the extent to which we'll learn further once we do further stat, testings. So to plead, to ameliorate and find a plan of action to take care of this poison in the soil and to bring the residents down there to a peace of mind, I support this paper and move approval.
Thank you. Counselor Scott Pelley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question, if, Alicia, you could just tell us how we notified our neighbors that what was happening and what were the, what could be the outcomes? How do we do that?
So we put together a, a letter from the mayor's office explaining actually with Mary Ann's contact information, because we knew that all of their concerns would be health-related concerns, and I am not appropriate, I don't have the background to address the health concerns, that's Mary Ann's office. So we put together a letter. It was hand-delivered to everybody on Ship Ave, every, I would have to call up a map to give you the names of the streets, but the two streets there that go out to Riverside Ave, and then that side of Riverside Ave as well. Those letters were hand-delivered by city staff one afternoon, that same afternoon, it was paper, it was mailed to those addresses as well, because we don't always trust hand-delivering. The mailing went to the property owners-- The mailing went to the property owners, so anything that was hand-delivered would have been picked up by whoever is residing there. The mailing was a list from the assessor's office of the property owners in that neighborhood. And then there was, we have a lot of email addresses because of the Clipper Ship Connector project, so every email address we had from that area was emailed that notice as well. And then we sent it out to the press, put it on the city's website, and put out a Facebook about it so that people in general would know about it. We then followed that up with fencing the area off and putting up signs that say danger soil contamination.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I second that, Mr. President. Move forward. Counselor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it was mentioned earlier that when we built the schools, the McGlin and the Andrews School, this city hired an LSP back, I think it was in nineteen ninety-nine or maybe even a year prior to that, and they did extensive boring in that entire site. And to be quite frank, I'm not sure if it includes this little riverbed park area here, but I can tell you firsthand that there was extensive boring done, and we knew back twenty years ago that there was contaminants of lead and arsenic. So this is no surprise, at least to me, that that area is heavily contaminated with lead and arsenic. And as you mentioned, soil was cotted in for, to mitigate rather than dig up because of the expense, they had to put down at the top level a certain amount that allowed us to use the ballparks, as you mentioned, the soccer fields and so forth. And what's happening now is anytime we dig or disturb the area, all of a sudden now we're raising up red flags. So whatever was being done there, you mentioned there was some digging going on for new project, maybe if there was some hindsight there saying, you know what, this is an area that we know is contaminated, the city has hired an LSP, we know it's in the area, maybe before we dig, maybe we should do some due diligence, because any digging down there is gonna raise a red flag. And I, in my opinion, we're gonna be in the same predicament. So my question is, if and when this happens, first of all, how long will it take place?
How long will which? The bore, the active boring?
No, not the boring, the remediation. How long will that take place?
So it depends how fast the city moves on it. Honestly, you can drag this out for years if you want to, under state law. Our preference would be to do this testing now in June, have results by early July, spend July and August figuring out what a good solution is, and then determine is this a solution we can put in place in the fall, what's the financial cost of it, and how long will it take? We would love to take that fence down and have this fixed by the fall. I don't know if we can, but the LSP says to me that that is not an irrational hope, that as long as we keep moving on it and don't drop, you know, we theoretically could, also as long as there's no other surprises that come up, things that he wasn't anticipating. There is some concern with, when you're right next to the river, how do you properly do things so that you're not completely ruining the ecosystem there? We have to look at flood levels and riverbanks and heights and not draining water into people's yards because we've now built up a level. So there's a bunch of things that need to be taken into consideration. I could imagine that we would have solutions in the fall and then spend the fall having public meetings and debate as to which solution is the best and the right one, identifying money, and then not being able to implement the spring.
Mr. President, the reason why I ask that question, and I appreciate your response, is that for those of us that have been behind this reel, have dealt with the issue in the West Medford parking lot for over three and a half years now, and we're finally getting to a point where we're gonna remediate the area at a great disruption to the businesses in West Medford. But the reason why I ask is because, as you mentioned, this is a highly traversed area, and I would hate to see this go on any longer than it has to. And I, as one member, will approve this, but I'd like to see a timeframe. I have to see something in writing that's gonna say, we're gonna start on this date. By then, the boring will be done, we're gonna start August first with the choosing of a plan or sending out a request for proposal for work. I think we have to see a timeframe before we vote on anything because potentially, we could be looking at another West Medford Bargain's bought liquor issue that lingers on for three, four, five years in this community, an area that's fenced off saying contaminants. And as Counselor Scott Pelley mentioned about the neighbors and so forth, about notification, I think it's important that residents not only know what's going on there, but also have an idea of a timeframe. So I'm not prepared to vote on this unless you're prepared tonight to at least give us some timeframe of the boring. What is the process? I don't have any paperwork in front of me.
Right, so that's what I asked, I've been sort of asking what are the different, where are the bottlenecks? So my first thing is that I would need a purchase order in order for the consultant to start doing drillings, consulting, giving me advice he's willing to just do knowing that will make him whole eventually. So I asked finance, they said if it was approved tonight, they could have something cut for me by Friday, which would mean that he could mobilize during the last two weeks of June. He has to schedule it, but it will either be next week or the week after that that he could have pourings done. We have a report that's due June twentieth, twenty-third, that's when we have an IRA plan due to DEP that the consultant will work on. I would, to my expectation, that if we move at this rate where we are out there in the next two weeks, we will have the results before the first of July, and that's when we'll start the plan, planning. What, how long that planning takes will be dependent on what the results of these tests are. Depending what the tests are will dramatically change that piece of it.
So for this first part, I would ask my council colleagues to put a condition that the boring and test results be received by this council by July first. That's a date that you just said that seems realistic, and that way we know the process is gonna keep moving. So I would ask that as a condition, Mr. President. And also, my last point is, recently, the community voted by way of election that we created a Community Preservation Act, and that's for open space, community preservation, and a number of issues. Could that money be used to work on a project like this?
I would want to check, but I don't think so. I can't say definitively not, but it's used for improving recreation areas and it's used for acquiring land. And I, I've never asked, because in, before this, before now, before this occurred, the brownfield that we had concern about was the West Medford parking lot, and I would tell you, no, you can't use it, that, that's a parking lot, it's not a recreation area. So I will say that I have not actually thought to ask whether we would be able to use that money on something like this.
Well, you can ask, but-
You know what?
Mr. President, if we can make that part of also the condition that we receive a report back or a response from the city solicitor asking us, asking whether or not we can use Community Preservation Act to pay for this ongoing process of remediation on this particular site.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Felko.
Just a couple of last questions. Alicia, is all of this property, is this all City of Medford property? Is any of this property owned by DCR?
Well, I was actually, so in fact, when we started this project, we were under the impression it was all City of Medford, and it turns out that there is an amount near the yacht club. So we thought the border was the line between the gravel and the grass. I've actually now had it flagged where the property line is. So I had a surveyor out there this, this week, last week, last week, to mark where the property line is. So it's about a hundred feet in from the Riverside Yacht Club into the park where the DEP property is. So we've been in, DEP, sorry, DCR. So we have been talking with DCR about their property ownership of that hundred feet there and how they want to handle that piece of it. We will not be doing any of our pourings on past that property line, that's why we had it marked, and we're trying to coordinate with DCR that last hundred feet.
So DCR will hopefully eventually do pourings in that area?
I'm certain that the state DEP will require them to, just like they're requiring us to.
Okay. As far as, so as far, you mentioned there are two reports, one in June and one in August?
Yes.
And we, can we receive copies of both of those when they are?
I'm happy to do that. Yeah, they, for the record, they are public reports, so we will submit them to state DEP. DEP reviews them, and then they put them on their website, they're available for everybody. The city is also perfectly welcome, we can send it to you guys and post them on the city's website as well.
If you could send us copies, I greatly appreciate it, and just be good to read those as soon as we get them. There's a lot of residents that live in that area, so it's, it would be ideal to see what exactly, we know what the concern's at, but to see how bad it is and what's-
Right.
-eventually going to be done to.
And I do just want to warn you, I don't write those reports, the license site professional does. When I've read others of these reports, they're kind of heavy, they're kind of heavy in the technical terms, so they're, they're not written for the general public, they're written for the state agency that monitors this stuff. So, but yeah, we're happy to share them.
Just while we're on the topic, so when we had the committee, the whole meeting regarding the Clipper Ship Connector, a couple of months ago, I believe, they talked about the other side of the river as well.
Right, on, right, ninety-three side of the river.
Is that DCR property or is that?
That is also, that is DCR property over there, the whole other side of the river between ninety-three and the river.
Okay, do we know if there are any plans for the DCR to test that side?
No. I, usually people don't start testing soil until you're going to remove it and move it out of the way, and that's what triggers somebody. So when you move soil and you're getting rid of it, you can't just move it unless you know that it's clean. So if you're gonna dispose of it somewhere, you have to test it, you have to do a characterization. So usually you don't unless you have a reason to test it.
The reason, the reason why I ask was because that night, I think they did talk about putting a lane of, you know, a trail that went on that side of the river as well.
Right.
And I'm not sure if that's gonna come before or after the Clipper Ship Connector, but I would think that's going, that would be a concern as well that needs to be addressed, so.
And I would have to refer that to DCR and what they would choose to do on their property. The state, the agency that would oversee that contamination, et cetera, is the State Department of Environmental Protection. And while I'm the environmental director in Medford, I don't actually have oversight over that, and I can't tell the state agency to go test. It would be the other state agency that would tell them.
And I understand that, but I think if they're going to run, because they made it sound like that during the meeting, I think they were going to run that path down that side.
They would also like to investigate that path, they would also like to consider designing on that side as well. That is not currently funded, it's not currently a project in process.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Counselor Longo Kern.
One last question, thank you, Vice President Marks. With regards to the many, many condos that are on the other side of this white line, I see that a lot of it's paved and obviously built on, but has there been any concerns from the property owners that this lead on their property and underneath their property?
The state has been in touch with them and has been talking to them directly. I've not been a party to those conversations, but I was told they were contacting the condo association. They have actually groundwater contamination under those condos that they have been dealing with, and there is, they have a license site professional engaged because of that. So I know that the state, well, the state told me that they were going to speak to the condo owners association and to that LSP about the lead, but, but I don't know what he actually said or what their plans are.
So the groundwater contamination that they have is mostly likely lead?
It's completely unrelated.
Oh, completely unrelated.
It is completely unrelated. I think it's hydrochloric, do you remember? It's, yeah, it's a completely different contamination, and we were, frankly, we were shocked. We thought that when we dug right next, the first test pit, that we were gonna see their contamination, if anything, and we didn't, we saw this other thing.
Completely different.
And that was, because all of the test pourings that were done in nineteen ninety-nine and before then, or through that project, were on the other side. I have all of those reports in my office, and there was nothing done on this side of the pathway. And honestly, I, I know, people keep telling me that we know there was lead there, but the actual report sitting in my desk doesn't say that there was lead there on the rest of the property. So I, it's perplexing, this is not the first time I've had people say that, by far, so.
I approve of the paper as well, or second it with those two or three conditions.
Thank you.
And make sure we have a report back from the mayor's office stating that she's gonna give the extra two thousand to do ten additional test pourings, seven feet deep. Thank you.
Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I too feel as though that this is an appropriate paper to approve this evening. I feel as though it's a good use of free cash. Ultimately, it's an unforeseen situation that does require immediate action. I think that the residents in the neighborhood deserve it. We have a recurrent theme in our community here that the residents want to see us tap into one of the most underutilized resources that we have here in Medford, which is our river. That coupled with the fact that the residents along Ship Avenue that are abutting this property are going to see a drastic impact on their quality of life and their property value, the longer that this fence stays up that says contamination, would lead me to believe that it's a good vote this evening to take to approve the forty-nine thousand dollars for Riverbend Contamination LSP Services, Mr. President. As such, I would support the amendments as well. Move approval, the question.
Thank you, Counselor Knight. Thank you, we have a gentleman that would like to speak. Name and address of the record, please.
Andrew Castanetti, Cushion Street, Medford, Mass. I'm very dismayed, all of a sudden, we may have a dirty twenty-one E at this riverside after two to three hundred years of the area being a dumping site. And if there is a problem, although is this not the DCR, State of Massachusetts problem and their cost to clean up? Believe in that, in the sixteen seventy-seven law, Massachusetts had said, we the people have rights of twenty feet above mean high tide along all waterways. P.S., I, we have been fishing, my son and many of my neighbors, and biking there for over fifty years. I'm further dismayed, being on the eve of finally getting our East Medford Connect a bike path, the missing link which happens to be the center of the city, mind you, connecting west to Assembly Road. Also, we had already built bike paths behind adjacent and adjoining that possible dirty twenty-one E area behind the new schools, the McGlin and the Andrews. And it's sad, coincidentally, when we're finally having a Thursday meeting to hopefully finalize and connect the middle part, that we have this situation that I've noticed the fences and I couldn't negotiate with my bicycle for the last couple of weeks. Please, let's try to make some sense of this.
Thank you.
And hopefully this year and not in ten years.
Thank you. Name and address of the record, please.
Hi, Gina Zoh, Thirty-Five Parrish Street. If I may through the chair, just a question on clarification. When Alicia was going over the details of the pourings that were gonna happen, I believe she indicated there were four that were going to go down to groundwater level, and I'm just curious if we're testing that groundwater at the same time? And if so, what type of additional implications could that open up for that same area? Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, I think it's quite here. Sorry, when you were reading?
Yeah, I just, the groundwater and what was-
There were four boring spots that you had said were going to groundwater.
Yes.
Are we testing the groundwater?
Through the chair, Alicia, if you can answer the question.
I couldn't hear the end of it, and if so, if we were testing groundwater, yes.
And what type of implication could that have on overall cost?
Oh, so the, basically, there are different kinds of contaminations, some are soil contaminations and some are groundwater contaminations, and so we need to test the groundwater because we need to test for everything per the state DEP. And so if you find contamination in groundwater, then the question is, what is it, how is it, is it coming out, is it getting out into the air? How is it, like, that's one of those things that could change. You know, when I say, oh, we could dig up the soil and put new soil on top, but then if we find groundwater contamination, that could change totally what we're doing and totally what the solution is, which is why I hesitate to say this is what our solution is and this is how long we're gonna take. My hope is that we don't find anything. If we find stuff in the groundwater that's related to what's actually being treated for under those condos, then that would be connected, and that's actually being paid for by an insurance company from the person, the company that insured the construction of those condos originally is paying for that current work that's going on.
originally is paying for that current work that's going on. So if we found the same contaminant, it would be linked and become part of that. It could get complicated. I'm hoping that it doesn't. We can all do what we do to hope that we don't find contamination and that this is just, the lead is the only thing there.
Thank you. The questions? Offered by Counselor Del Rosso, seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley, as amended by Counselor Marx. Counselor Longo Kern. And Counselor Marx again. All those in favor? All those in favor? Roll call has been requested. Certified free cash, we do need a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Del Rosso.
Yes.
Counselor Falco.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Longo Kern.
Yes.
Vice President Marx.
Yes.
Counselor Scott Pelley.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion passes.
Counselor Scott Pelley, while we're on this, suspension.
17-511 petition by Robert Moore for Clematis Avenue, Medford, Mass. to address the council about a business being run out of a residential neighborhood home. Mr. Moore, if you would please?
Robert Moore, for Clematis Road.
Thank you.
There is a business being run of one Clematis Road. Perez Landscaping.
A landscaping company?
Their name is Perez Landscaping. September through fall, it is landscaping. Winter, there's small removal. An year-round scrap metal retrieval, cutting up metal, what have you, on-site. Originally, it was just small push mowers, leaf blowers, stuff like that. Now they have heavy equipment, Bobcat, grass-cutting tractor, wood chipper, which they use on-site, trailer to haul back and forth, a two-and-a-half-ton, two-and-a-half-ton truck to pull the trailer. The residential area is not zoned for business. I like it stopped.
Counselor Scott Pelley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that I went out and visited the site, and I talked to Mr. Moore, and we, there is equipment. If we can, I'd like to ask Mr. Berusso to give us a report back and what the history has been and what is being done moving forward to make sure that this is being investigated properly, so the neighbors in that area aren't being woken up at 5:00 in the morning due to heavy trucking and beeping and stump grinding during the weeknights and weekends and so on and so forth. Like I said, I know I've been out there, Mr. Beretto and Mr. Moore, and I've seen the house. I've tried to talk to the person, and if we can just get a report back from Mr.?
Has Mr. Berusso been called yet?
I believe he has, and I believe he's already issued tickets, so if we can just get an update and if we can ask for a plan moving forward to make sure that those residents aren't being affected in such a negative way. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Knight.
Sorry, this past memorial, they started building a structure in the yard. For what purpose, I don't know. Storage? They got a permit? I doubt it. I have pictures of another neighbor that took them. I did forward those pictures to Paul Mookie. I don't know if he passed them on to you or not, but...
We do not have them.
You can have these if you'd like. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much, and Mr. Moore, thank you for coming here this evening. I appreciate it, and I can certainly understand your frustration. I too grew up in a home that lived next door to a person that ran a junkyard out of his backyard, and my next-door neighbor on the other side parked an 18-wheeler in his driveway every night, so I can certainly understand the impact that's having on your quiet enjoyment and peace in your neighborhood. In addition to referring this matter to the code enforcement officer suggested by Counselor Scott Pelley, I'd also like to amend the paper, Mr. President, and request that the Board of Health go out and do an examination out there. If the gentleman is in fact collecting junk and debris, then there may be Board of Health issues that are coming along with that as well. So I'd like to ask that Ms. O'Connor, send one of her inspectors out there to take a look and make sure that they're in compliance with all Board of Health regulations that are in place as well.
Thank you, Counselor Knight. Vice President Marx.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also have a clean-it or lean-it ordinance, and if there is debris or building materials or anything in that yard, we can enforce the clean-it or lean-it. So I think the appropriate avenue is for the building commissioner and the building inspector to go out there and code enforcement officer and check out what's going on on the property, and they'll deem whether or not there's sufficient facts to prove that there's a business being run out of that location, and then be able to fine them accordingly. And if that doesn't work, you can end up taking them to court. So there's a number of avenues that they can do, and that really is the first step. So...
I mean, we're the taxpayers. They only rent the property. It's absentee landlord.
Right, we could go after the property, absolutely. I agree with you. I'm just saying, the building department is really the enforcing authority. You know, the police department can't come, go out there.
I know.
The building department that would enforce that. And they've been successful in the past on other properties in the community, so they'll get our message loud and clear.
Thank you.
Yep.
Motion for approval, Mr. President. We have another gentleman that wants to speak. Name and address of the record, please.
Nicholas Beretta, 102 Harrison Street, up in the Heights. Talking about the same problem we have here. They moved into our neighborhood probably about four, five years ago. It started out with chickens. I get pictures here, chickens in my yard, chickens in the streets. Then they brought refrigerators, stoves, hot water heaters. The code enforcement come up. They got them to get rid of all that crap. Then they started with wood chippers.
Same address?
Wood chippers. They had trees that they cut down, they bring them home, they run them through the big chiper into the truck. And we tell them, you can't do that stuff. They're foreign people. I got nothing against anybody. I got nothing against the family. Just, this is a residential area. I've been up there 74 years, never had any problems. Now we get this problem. You got these trucks coming in. My daughter works on Friday night late. She tries to come up the street, which is on a dead end. The trucks, they're trying to get them in the yard, put a Bobcat in the yard. Took her one-half hour to get up the street, and I'm only one house away from my house. And I'd appreciate if you people would do something about this because we've gone to the commission downstairs to the building department. I've gone to the mayor's office three times. They said they were gonna handle it, and we still have the problem. Now we're here, we hope this is our last stop. I don't want to have to go to any court. The owner, he allowed them to bring rubbish from his property up in Winchester, one or the other, and dump it behind Cow Park because it backs up Cow Park. We're telling them, you can't do that. The kid that lives in the house says, he said it was okay to do that. So now every once in a while, they slip some rubbish in there, which is leaves. I've had fires behind my house, almost come down to my house throughout the years I've been there. But if they keep putting all these leaves back there, they're gonna take me else. So I appreciate if you can take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion by Counselor Scott Pelley that we inform the building inspector and the health inspector to go down and check the property, seconded by Vice President Marx. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion by...
While we're on suspension?
Yes.
I just acknowledge that today, June 6th, is the 74th, 73rd anniversary of DEGA.
Thank you, Mr. Del, thank you, Counselor Del Rosso. Thank you. On the motion by Counselor Scott Pelley that we move, you have something? On the motion by Counselor Knight to take another paper out of order. Which paper would that be, Counselor Knight?
It's a paper, 17504, sir.
Counsel, Vice President Marx, if you could read this, please. Mr. Vice President?
Yep. Paper 17-504 offered by President Caviello. Be resolved that the Medford City Council discuss the problems caused by construction on Boston Ave. to Harvard Street. Counsel President Caviello.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Vice Presidents, from Harvard Street, all the way up to Boston Ave., you went to Ball Square, for the past three, three to four years, there's been constant construction going over there. And there's, from digging the streets up to blocking the streets, and there are many businesses that are on that street that have suffered greatly from, with their business because of the street closures for extended periods of time, and a lot of the times, they were done with no notification to the businesses. And I know that some of the businesses have reached out to the developers, and they seem to not have been any help. I mean, as soon as one project stopped there, another one started right up. So, you know, I think it's about time that these half a dozen businesses and the homes that are there receive some kind of break for all the disruption they've been going through for the last three years. And the city doesn't seem to be doing anything about it. So, and I would ask that the engineer, the city engineer, again, step in and give us some kind of timeframe and to let us know what's happening with the project and how much longer they're gonna be there.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much, and I'd like to thank Counselor Caviello for putting this resolution forward. I too, over the weekend, had the opportunity to meet with a couple of business owners that operate on Harvard Avenue, and there's a situation where it's not just one development that's going on. We have the development at 640 Boston Ave. being performed by 640 Boston Avenue LLC, and that's a 43-unit development housing. And I spoke with the general manager of the construction company yesterday, and that project's gonna be wrapping up around July 1st. So the construction's gonna be complete, and people will be moving in July 1st. With that being said, Mr. President, that's not the only issue in the neighborhood. We've seen the MBTA perform an extended amount of work on the train tracks in preparation for the Green Line extension that's impacted this business. Now, then we've seen Tufts University go in and do some work up on the top of Boston Ave. that's also impacted this business, and now we're seeing Eric's Deveraux doing some public utility work on the Somerville side that's disrupting this business. So if you wanted to get to the stretch of Boston Ave. between Ball Square and Harvard Street, and you were coming from Somerville, the only way that you'd be able to go would be to go up past Tufts University, all the way up to the library, then turn around down Boston Ave. and come back down Boston Ave. So in essence, the traffic constraints that are in place right now are detouring people directly out of the entire region, Mr. President, which is having an impact on the businesses down there. So I think it's also pertinent that we receive copies of the traffic management plans from 640 Boston Ave. as well as Eric's Deveraux, who's performing the utility work on Harvard Street on the Somerville side, Mr. President, in front of St. Clement's Church. It's my understanding that Tufts University at this point in time has ceased their construction. That project is complete, and the finishing touches that are being put on are striping and signage. And I also am under the impression, Mr. President, that in the near future, the MBTA will be back out in the area performing some work. They're gonna be doing some land takings, et cetera. So I'd also like to ask that the MBTA provide us with their traffic management plan. Once we receive those documents, we can forward them to our Division of Engineering and ask our Division of Engineering to review the traffic management plans and come up with recommendations to create a better flow of traffic that will have a less adverse impact on the businesses that are in operation on that stretch of land.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Scott Pelley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I too went out in the site, talked to a few of the neighbors. I think if we can have, you know, from beginning to end of Boston Ave., that constituents get an update on when the jobs or work being performed is being done. I had a call and I talked to one of our friends that told us that they have to get up and leave an hour and a half early before the construction starts because if the construction starts before they leave, depending what time they come in, they're stuck in the driveway. So, and they're not getting much help or assistance or information from those developers or the contractors. So if we can reach out to engineering and see who's doing the work to inform our constituents on Deveraux and Boston Ave. all the way up and down, and have a defined start time and end time to make their lives a little bit easier, it'd be greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Del Rosso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended last Wednesday night instead of our committee, the whole meeting. I attended a meeting sponsored by the Department of Transportation on the Green Line extension. And I was there along with the mayor and members of our state delegation to express a concern about, by a number of the neighbors and butters to the project. One of the clear things that's emerged in this latest development of activity along the rail line, the rail corridor, is the fact that much of the work proceeded without a point person, a point of contact for the neighbors, someone who would represent the construction company, the MBTA, Department of Transportation, to the general public. We expressed that clearly to the members of the construction team that were present there, the management team from the MBTA, DOT, and the construction people. And so it's, they got the message clear, not only from the elected officials present, but also from the neighbors, that they want someone that they can reach out and have open channels of communication where there are problems occurring. And they are occurring, and there's going to be a significant change, ambient change to the area as this project continues. There'll be elimination of virtually all the vegetation all the way up beyond the gymnasium at the corner of College Ave. to accommodate this project in the coming months. There'll be, they'll begin the process of widening the rail bed or moving the tracks further to the north to make way for the southern tracks that will be inserted. And we're gonna see the insertion of retaining walls and the beginnings and foundations of sound barriers in the corridor. So they're ready to go. They're going. They're moving, they're doing the prep work of this project. We can, unless something happens with the funding at this point, we can consider it underway. And so people are gonna be affected, and people will need someone to reach out to who was managing the project, and we made that our priority in that meeting. There will be another meeting, I think, in a week or so, I forget the exact date, here in the council chambers, for the general public of Medford to speak on the issue of this Green Line extension. I know they're holding one, I think, this week or next week in Somerville, and so it will be important. And everything's up on the city's webpage and the Green Line extension webpage as far as information and contacts on this. But I know that a number of people have felt the pressure about, by being constantly under construction up there for the past several years. Lottery utility work, and there has been disruption up there. We want to support the businesses up there, and want to support and see that you're served properly up there and don't have to go under any more duress than is necessary.
Counsel President Caviello.
Thank you. I know Counsel Knight mentioned that the project that's up there, it will be finished in July, but when I spoke to him, he's telling me that another project is ready to go right behind it, and the developer of that property has made no attempt to work with the businesses, again, total disregard for their needs before he starts. So before this, say, as soon as one stops, and no one's gonna start, and these guys, and same person, and these people, it'll be another two years before they get a break. So I think something has to be done now, not when this guy just decides to do whatever he wants.
Thank you, Mr. President. Name and address of the record, sir.
Yes, Joseph Analotto, 590 Boston Ave., Medford, Mass. Thank you primarily first for giving me this opportunity to speak about my grievances tonight in front of the council. Basically, I've been grinning, bearing, you know, the impacts from the construction since the first phase of the Green Line, and I think it started in about October 2012. Surprisingly, the impacts from that construction, in particular to the Harvard Street Bridge, was not as significant as I, you know, thought in the beginning, because whoever was the engineer on that project, particularly routing the traffic, they were cognizant of, you know, our ongoing day-to-day business, and, you know, sales actually, you know, were pretty close to the sales before the work commenced. This situation... This situation, it's completely different. I mean, I've never been encumbered by road construction this badly in my entire life there. And I've been working on that corner since 1990. And I've probably been working on that corner every day, you know, seven days a week since 1998. So, I mean, I spend a significant amount of time in the neighborhood and I know, you know, I have a feel for the flow of traffic and everything else. And it just seems like no one knows what's going on over there. I mean, customers are complaining about it to me every day. You know, I had a hard time getting over here and I came here after work instead of coming here in the morning. Some of them, you know, they're fed up with it. You know, to what extent do myself have to be responsible for loss of business, for all this other work being done around me? I mean, there's no, nobody really reached out to me before the utility work began, development project on, and it just seems like the work started and I'm supposed to grin and bear the sentiment that I'm picking up off the street. I mean, I realize that the entire area is going to change, you know, gentrification is taking place and, you know, we all know that. But it's really starting to affect my bottom line. And it's the losses, in particular, the last couple of months since Easter, have been significant, to the point where I feel demoralized. You know, you sit there when the top of Boston Ave. is closed and then Harvard Street and then Warner Street's closed and, I mean, you're just sitting there, you know, twiddling your thumbs, you know. So, then the thing that really set me off is reading the scope of the work that Deveraux Construction had outlined. They're going to be doing utility work Monday through Saturday in May. And I mean, the cowwash business, May is probably our busiest month of the year. We really do rely on that revenue to get through the rest of the year because, obviously because of the pollen season, you know. And I can understand Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 4:00, but Monday through Saturday? Is it that necessary to do work on Saturday? Also, the way they've been routing the traffic over there, it seems like they do it a different way every day. So, I mean, it's a, for lack of a better word, a mess. I just feel that the planning of this work was not well thought out. From an inexperienced person, I have no, I've never been a traffic engineer in my life and I probably never will, but I just feel like something's wrong here. And I'm not the only one that said it. I mean, countless people have said, you know, you should be, you know, getting an attorney and all this other, you know. I'm trying to run a business on a day-to-day basis. I really don't want to go, you know, to those means because it's just going to suck up and my time and my business. I have to be there, make sure I'm making a, make sure my customers, and a plethora of other issues that go with running a business of that nature, a service business. So, again, basically, the premise of my grievance was outlined by Rick and Adam, you know, before I spoke. And, you know, I'd really appreciate any type of consideration that you, as the council, can give to us, not just myself, but the entire neighborhood over there as the rest of this work goes on. I would like to say, though, that when they did do the first phase of work on the bridge, whoever was in charge of engineering the traffic flow did a significantly better job than it is now. Whoever is working, whoever is in charge of that dynamic is not doing a good job, in my opinion.
Thank you for your comments. Consul O'Neil.
Mr. Anoletto, have you had any conversations with Tufts University or the city of Medford relative to the work that they're going to be proposing relative to the Complete Streets program and the reconfiguration of the intersection at Boston Ave. and at the top of the hill by the library?
No, I've had no correspondence with Tufts.
No correspondence with Tufts. And nobody from the administration as well?
No.
Okay. Mr. President, if I could amend the paper to request that the city engineer reach out to Titan Gas Station to explain to them the scope and circumstances of the Complete Streets project going on at the top of Boston Ave. That would be appreciated as well.
Thank you. I think we have someone else behind you that would like to speak.
Thank you. Gina Nuozzo, 35 Power Street. I feel like every meeting that I attend and I watch, we hear more and more about the onslaught that our residents and small business are facing in this city. And I think it's becoming crucial that we demand that these folks that are working within our city limits reach out and communicate effectively with the people whose lives they're impacting. And in an area like Boston Ave., that isn't necessarily just the butters or people in the general neighborhood. That's a main area that people traverse through. There should be communications. There should be transparencies for these things. And there should be representation of our residents. We really are, for lack of a better phrase, under attack. Everyone is feeling it across the board. They're feeling it on Boston Ave. They're feeling it up on Winthrop Street by the high school where there is demolition going on up there. Salem Street is getting set to feel its pains with the Brake Pro project. I don't know if that statement has come out yet, but we expect that to be happening. And yet, we continue to see that the South Street area, they're under attack too by their onslaught of development that's happening there. But we continue to see these groups, teams, and individuals come into our city and run roughshod over everybody. And yes, gentrification is underway, but we certainly don't have to sit back and just accept it. And gentrification isn't only going to occur to just our seniors. It's going to occur to our businesses as well. And so, we talk about things like how to revitalize Medford Square and bring back small businesses, where you hear about, you know, organizations and companies that are suffering because their foot traffic and vehicle traffic is being removed. We look at someone like Carols, who's been under onslaught now for months upon months with bridge work that's going to extend and extend and extend. And it troubles me greatly because we keep discussing these things and the situation seemingly is getting worse and worse. We talk about things like development committees made up of residents, and I think we talked about that weeks ago now. Haven't heard a word back about it. So, you know, I've said it before, I'll say it again, zoning, development, yes, there are departments that are involved, but the purview of it resides with this council. And I would urge you, if we don't do something as a group to set limits and insist upon the rules of engagement for these folks, it's going to come to a head somehow. And I just, that in conjunction with airplanes and everything, it's just, it's crazy right now in the city of Medford. And we look to you guys because we know how much you all love the city like we do. But it's, next week, it's going to be someone else coming up, you know. There's always something going on. And until, unless and until, we insist that they have those communication plans and use the proper methods to communicate them effectively throughout the city when appropriate, it's just going to continue to go on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. On the motion by Consul President Caviello, second, Consul Longo Kern.
Thank you. Just if we could read back what the resolve is, just so we know what we're voting on.
Ed, turn on your mic. Did you have the?
I'm looking for the, because this is a petition, so I'm trying to, trying to. Okay, okay. So, the resolve is, Medford City Council discusses the problems caused by construction of Boston Ave. to Harvard Street. Then we have amendment. Okay, the city engineer, reach out to the business owners of Titan to further explain the scope of the service and construction, the ongoing process to them.
Is that Consul Knight's amendment?
This is Consul Knight's amendment. Consul Scott Pelley. Now, as we see, Scott Pelley is looking for the city engineer to provide a start time and end time of the projects to reach out and provide some notifications to the residents or businesses in there. Let me see here. President Caviello, city engineer, give some time, let me see here, scope of time, you know, when the projects, these projects are going to continue. So, they were also looking for a start and end time.
If, then, nothing's been mentioned with regards to traffic flow and who's in charge of traffic flow, so if we could...
Yeah, Consul Knight asked for traffic plans from the MBTA and the traffic plans for the construction at Harvard and Boston Ave. and surrounding areas.
Yep, I just think that's the main point of the, one of the main points of the complaint and that we look into the traffic flow and make sure it's flowing the same every day in a way that works. So, I second approval of the paper and hopefully the administration can get on the MBTA as well. If we could amend it, ask the administration to also reach out to the MBTA and ask them to make sure traffic is flowing. We need to keep on top of it. As a city, we need to make sure the traffic is flowing for the residents and the business owners and that it's consistent day after day. Because as a business owner, you feel the frustration. You don't want anybody to be hurting. And if it comes down, construction's going to go on everywhere, but if it comes down to actually just managing your traffic flow on a consistent basis, so the residents and the people that frequent these businesses know how to get from point A to point B the same way every day, that's a simple fix that should be done and should be implemented. So, I ask that the mayor's office get on this and I second the resolve, especially asking the MBTA to figure it out for residents and our business owners.
On the motion offered by President Caviello, seconded by Consul Longo Kern, amended by Consul Knight, further amended by Consul Scott Pelley, and President Caviello, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Motion to revert back to the regular order of business?
Seconded.
Seconded by Consul Knight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Presidents. Hearing, 17433, City of Medford, notice of a public hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Medford City Council in the Howard F. Alden Memorial Auditorium, City Hall, 85 JSP Hesse Drive, Medford, Mass. on Tuesday evening, June 6, 2017, at 7:00 PM on a petition by Jose A. Perez Poses of Annie's Pizzeria LLC, 213 Middlesex Ave., Medford, Mass. 02155, for a special permit to amended hours of operation in accordance with Medford Zoning Ordinance Chapter 94, Section 94/145 to operate extended hours at the business at 213 Middlesex Ave., Medford, Mass. On said site being located in a general residence zoning district, continue use as follows. Extended hours of operation requested, Monday through Sunday, 11:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Petition and plan may be seen in the office of City Clerk, Medford City Hall, Medford, Mass. Call 781-393-2501 for accommodations. Consul Knight is the chairman of zoning. Do we have anyone here? Name and address to the record.
Say it again.
Name and address to the record.
Jose Perez.
Are you here speaking in favor of this petition?
I'm sorry, say one more.
Are you here speaking in favor of this petition?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else speaking in favor of this petition? Hearing and seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Do we have anyone here in opposition to this proposal? Hearing and seeing none, that section is closed. Consul Knight, he was the chairman of zoning. How have you found the papers?
Mr. President, upon reviewing the papers, I do have a, before us, we have a petition to hours of operation from 7:00 AM in the morning till 2:00 AM. That would be the certified hours of operation of this paper. Can you explain to me what the hours of operation are at Annie's Pizzeria in terms of when they are actually going to be open and operating?
Well, we don't have a launch. We, basically, we open from 11:00 to 10:00, actually. And then, what we need is, then, the hours is after 10:00, from, you know, until 2:00 in the morning. But we don't have a launch. We, basically, we open at 11:00.
At 11:00, okay.
Yes.
And how many employees do you have working for you?
I have four.
Four employees working for you? Mr. President, as I review the paperwork here, I see the Statement of Workers' Compensation Insurance affidavit for a, in box number two on the state form, which I have a little bit of familiarity of. It says, "I am a sole proprietor of partnership and have no employees working for me in any capacity. If, in fact, the gentleman does have four employees working for him, he will be required to purchase workers' compensation insurance." In terms of the materials that have been submitted to the council this evening, they are complete. In terms of the accuracy as to whether or not he's not going to be required to carry workers' compensation, a different story, Mr. President. If, in fact, he does have four employees that are working for him that are not part of the sole proprietorship or the business partnership, then he will be required to purchase workers' compensation insurance. Purchase the workers' compensation insurance does of $100 if you are found in violation of the Workers' Compensation Act and fail to appeal it, $250 a day if you're found in violation of the Workers' Compensation Act and do appeal it. So, I guess my question to the gentleman at the podium right now is if, in fact, you do have that are working for you and you are currently in operation, you will be found in violation of the law if these people aren't at least 250 of the corporation.
Yeah, I explained Sylvia in the clerk department. It's my wife and me, kids working. I need to not extend hours, so I have those employees because I don't know if I can hire them. But if I extend my hours, I'm going to hire them. Not yet. I don't have any yet.
So, it's, so right now, you're open from 11:00?
It's just my wife and me, where we are in the checkbooks, and my son just give us our help.
Okay, so the offices and corporation that were filed with the Secretary of State's office would list that the offices and principals of the corporation are yourself and your wife?
Yeah.
And no others?
No.
And then, if the Department of Industrial Accidents Investigation Division happened to go to 213 Middlesex Ave. and went behind the counter, the only people that would be working, including delivering, cooking food, working cash register, any of that?
Well, that's, it's a small business. We just started, but we want to grow.
Right.
So, that's why we want to extend hours. If we extend hours, I don't, I don't choose going to hire probably two more employees, but I'm going to hire maybe a driver, an extra driver, you know, because...
So, as long as you're aware that if, in fact, you do hire employees that are in excess of your...
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Of the individuals in the corporation. Mr. President, based upon the conversation I've had with the gentleman, I do feel, as though the paper is in order and complete, I would suggest that because of the nature of the permit and the willingness for the employee to keep his business open until 2:00 in the morning, we place a 90-day review on this. I would also recommend, Mr. President, that if approved, that the approval for extended hours would stay with the business and not the address. So, that if the business moves, then the permit for extended hours would die with the relocation of the business.
Thank you.
If I could, through the chair, Mr. President, ask, why do you wish to stay open so late?
Like I said, we want to grow. We want to, you know, especially people, it's wake late. Not us, we are sleeping early. But I know the market, I have a friend of mine, it's Pepys Pizzeria in Somerville, and they catch most of the business right now after those hours because everybody else closes. And then, I request to some of my neighbors and my customers, they say it could be awesome because isn't anything open at that time. Sometimes we are laid up. Sometimes we are laid up, the jobs, and it's not open, and it could be really good for you, why you don't try? That's what I'm trying, I mean, just trying to see if I can grow, you know?
And if I could, do you offer a delivery service?
Yes.
Do you have deliveries of pizzas?
Yes.
Yes.
It must be most of the business, probably delivered, that's what I say. If I, if I extend the hours, if I, you give me that opportunity, I can, you know, hire more people and more drivers, because I can do it myself, definitely.
Thank you. Mister President, if I might say, in the past, when faced with these requests, when there's been opposition, those people have made themselves known, either by informing myself and other counselors, or by making themselves present here at a council meeting. I can think of one instance where the proprietor of the franchise was quite persistent. In fact, the first time he petitioned us for extended hours, he arrived here with a dozen pizzas for us. I did not partake. And quite frankly, I don't partake of that brand at all, ever. However, so many of my neighbors were quick to point out, and they made, many of them made themselves present here, and many of them made an effort to contact me at my office to say that they did not want this going on, because they did not want these cars speeding through the neighborhood. As President, I've not been contacted by anybody here, nor have I seen anybody present to speak in opposition. And I might say that the chairman has made an excellent measure by pointing out that we should have a ninety-day review on this, and that the, that if the extended hours of operation are granted, that they be granted only to the petitioner and not to a subsequent owner, nor towards the property permanently.
Thank you. Vice President Marks?
Thank you, Mister President. And the petitioner mentioned that he's only open till ten PM.
Yes.
Your license right now is until...
Until ten.
Eleven.
Until eleven, but I close at ten.
Right, so you're closing at ten, you're able to open till eleven, now you want to stay open till two AM.
Yeah, usually between nine PM to eleven, it's totally that. It's like a time to clean and go home. But when everybody else closes after eleven, is when you can catch some businesses, because we have something online.
Mister President, you know, we've taken these petitions for extended licenses based on a number of circumstances, and each petition is an individual petition based on its own merits. And I would venture to say, Mister President, that this particular business is nestled between homes. You have homes across the street, you have homes on either side, Mister President, and in my opinion, a two AM closing would pose a severe quality of life issue for area residents in that particular area. So even with the ninety day, which I think is a very amendable way of trying to put things through, I don't support that, Mister President. If the gentleman wanted to open maybe until midnight and start off at midnight, and that would give him eleven and twelve, which he's not opening eleven, he has by right, it would give him eleven and twelve, and then see how it goes. And then, in six months from now or a year from now, say maybe I'd like to open till one. But to start off at two AM, Mister President, in an area that's already congested, all those stores, as the gentleman mentioned, are closed after, probably eleven o'clock's the latest, maybe, maybe midnight, and this would be two hours after that, of hearing doors open and close, and having this be, as the gentleman alluded to, the spot where you can go get a pizza at two in the morning. And I don't know if the neighbors, in my opinion, are willing to put up with that. And this is a special permit, this is not by right, this is a special permit. So at this time, Mister President, I cannot sign off on this. I'd be willing to go up to midnight on a provisional basis, and then if we hear back from residents that everything's fine with midnight, maybe we could explore one. But to go right to two AM, Mister President, Mister Clerk, how many operations do we have in the city at two AM?
Sir?
Several, citywide, but we have hundreds of businesses, we may have several that are open citywide. And again, Mister President, I'm not saying anything, I know that business has turned over a number of times, I live right around the corner, and that's changed hands a number of times, that business, over the years. So I know it's been a tough location, and I wish you well there, but to me, two AM is, I just can't support that based on the neighbors, Mister President.
Thank you, Mister Vice President. Counselor Knight?
Mister President, I do believe we ran into a similar situation back when we were discussing the extended hours at the old Panda Palace location, which is now Shanghai Moon. And we did a phase it. And we phased it in, I believe, we said, for the first six months it would be X, for the next three months it would be Y, for the final three months it would be Z, and we had a review step at each step of the way. And if the council is amendable, I mean, maybe that's a solution right now, we can help the gentleman out and all be in agreement that we give him a ninety-day permit till midnight, and then maybe a ninety-day review after midnight, and then if there are no issues, it would revert for another ninety-day period till one AM, and if there's no issues there, then it would revert to a two AM license with another ninety-day review. So in essence, we'd have, you know, a year and a half, a year and a half review of the extended hours, and they'd be gradually implemented, so that if any instances or issues in the neighborhood arise, we'll be able to nip them in the bud within ninety days of the event occurring. And then we can always, you know, have an opportunity to correct the wrongs if any are made, but if any aren't, then we can help the business owner succeed. I know the council has discussed the difficulty it is for businesses to be competitive in the city of Medford based upon a number of circumstances, and I believe that the extended hours was a permitting process that was put in place to address some of those concerns, and I'm hoping that maybe we can all sit down here and put our heads together and come up with a methodology that might work for everybody involved. So I'd ask the counselor if he feels as though that would be a suitable recommendation to do an increase of one hour, reach ninety days with a ninety-day review thereof, and maybe that'll be a solution of compromise for all involved.
Counsel Longo Kern?
I like the resolve through the chair. But did you, have you talked to your, you said the neighbors are asking you to stay open because they want...
Yeah, I forget a book, but I have a lot of signatures from, I collect like hundred and twenty.
Now, I know there's a couple homes across the street, have you...
Exactly. Especially the across the street, all of them, they said, and they said, I'm not, I'm okay with that, but I forgot. Especially is a guy across the street, he's like, he said, "I received your letter," and I signed it, I say, "Okay, it's not a problem for that."
Oh, and he signed your petition?
Yeah.
What time does Cafe Marie say open, Tom?
Who?
Cafe Marie, the coffee shop there?
I think always...
Is he one o'clock?
Something like that, yeah.
No?
Sometimes like that. Yeah, sometimes I stay late, not open, because I have to clean something or make prep things, and I get out of there at eleven thirty, and they still open, yeah.
Counsel Falcon?
Thank you, Mister President. I do have a couple of concerns regarding the late time, stay until two AM, and I do like the staged approach as to, you know, just kind of maybe increasing it over time, so I'm not completely against this, but how many drivers do you have delivering?
Right now, one.
One.
But I know if I get late, because I know the business from that time, I have my friend experienced in Summerbell, in Magoon Square, he told me, "You probably need two more, because it's busy time, everybody else closes."
And I understand, and that's a little bit of my concern, because, you know, if you're going to go till two AM, and then if you go up two drivers, you're going to have three drivers. That's three dri, which, three drivers coming and going at two AM is really, you got, you know, doors opening, closing, you know, you have cars, you know, driving around at two AM in a residential neighborhood, that's a bit of a concern, to me at least, and I think that it's something that needs to be looked at. I want to see you succeed, believe me, but I also want to make sure that, you know, we're safeguarding the neighborhood, making sure that, you know, people can get a good night's sleep, and, you know, I mean, if you have, you know, three drivers going back and forth at two AM, and especially if you're delivering up till two, that means they might be coming back to the shop after two. And, you know, so we're talking maybe two thirty, you know, when you really look at it. So I would definitely be, you know, in favor of the compromised proposal by Counsel Knight, you know, just kind of going in stages and maybe increasing, you know, over time, but, you know, they, if you're going to be going from one driver to three drivers and having all those cars coming and going that, late at night or early in the morning, that is definitely a concern, but I am definitely in favor of the staged approach, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Falcon. Counsel Knight?
Mister President, yes, I'd also like to ask the gentleman, is it your intention to stay open this late every day of the week, or just Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
I want to open, I told Sylvia, but for some reason she put the whole thing, but I just want to do it Sunday, Monday, Tuesday is dead, you know, Sundays, everybody has to go to work or school, it's dead, there's no reason to stay, or Monday, or Tuesday. I want to do it Wednesday to Saturday.
Wednesday to Saturday.
Because I know people start to get money and pay checks weekends, you know, definitely.
Mister President, I think it may make sense to, based upon the feedback that I think I'm receiving from my colleagues, that we put a ninety-day review, grant a special permit from eleven to twelve with a ninety-day review. If there are no instances or issues, that we will grant the automatic permit from twelve to one with a ninety-day review, and if there are no issues thereafter, we grant a permit from one to two automatic with a ninety-day review. Mister President, I think that last ninety-day review, when the permit is in place from one to two AM, should be restricted maybe to the Wednesday through Saturday, or maybe it should be restricted Wednesday through Saturday for the twelve to one and the one to two, so that we can get through the ninety-day review periods with them operating Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, the extended hours, and then we can get a better feel from the neighborhood what's going on. We'd be approving it, we wouldn't be approving it for seven days of the week, and we wouldn't be approving it a hundred percent, we'd be gradually phasing it in, so if any questions or concerns do arise, we'll be able to address them within short order.
Thank you. Mister Posos, are you happy with that?
No, that's, that's fine.
You're fine with that?
I appreciate it, thank you for any help.
Yeah, yeah. On the board? Vice President Marks?
Just so I can understand, so will the petitioner then appear before us in ninety days, or, because I heard automatic mentioned one time when you were mentioning it?
The way I was looking at it was if there's no issue that arises, if there's no concern, no complaint, then it automatically be granted the next level of...
So if there's one complaint, then he's not going to get approved?
We'll bring him in and we'll discuss it, figure out what's going on.
Well, that's why I think he should come in automatically, and...
That's fine, I can look at that.
I'll be quite honest with you, Mister, I don't mind the phase, but I won't go past one AM at any point. I think two AM is too much to ask for the neighborhood. So I don't mind the first phase to go up to midnight, might even support the one depending on feedback, but I am definitely not going to go up to two AM in that particular area, Mister President.
I think it's a fair compromise, and I'd support that wholeheartedly, Mister President. I'm doing a ninety-day review, bringing him back in, I think that that's a good way to proceed, it protects the neighborhood and it also helps the business owner compete.
All right. On the motion by Counsel Knight, with the stipulations that we have, seconded by Counsel Delarussue, so this is a special permit, so it does need five votes. Mister Clerk, please call the roll.
Correction, just to make sure, amendment is with the petitioner.
He goes with the petitioner?
All right.
It'll be ninety days till twelve o'clock?
So the days of, Wednesday through Saturday?
That's correct.
All right, ninety-day review, first ninety-day review, eleven, ninety-day review, twelve to one. You, one, with no issues, automatically.
Yes, he will, he will, he will, he will, ninety days to make sure that there are no problems.
Or we'll be on the reports still, so he can commit.
Thank you. Mister Clerk, please call the roll.
I believe there is a section, there's a section in our agenda that might indicate papers requiring action, and I'd request that this matter be placed, unfinished business, rather, that this matter be placed in unfinished business so that it comes up in the ninety days, so that it's on the agenda.
Actually, Norman would put that under, reports due.
Reports due, okay, yeah, so it'll be in there, so it'll be on the agenda for the next ninety days, so we have a date certain coming up.
Thank you. Mister Clerk, please call the roll. Counsel Delarussue?
Yes.
Counsel Falcon?
Yes.
Counsel Knight?
Yes.
Counsel Longo Kern?
Yes.
Vice President Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Scott Pelley?
Yes.
President Caviolo? Yes. Seven in the affirmative, none negative, motion passes, good luck.
Thank you.
See you in ninety days.
I promise you, I'm going to do my best.
And bring pizzas next time for us, we're hungry, he's late. All right. Motions, orders, and resolutions, seventeen, five oh five, offered by Vice President Marks, being resolved that the city administration perform a complete audit on the condition of our roads and provide the council with a complete assessment, including curbing, sidewalk catchbasings, sewer covers, and handicap rents, being further resolved that the city prioritize the list according to the road and infrastructure condition. Vice President Marks?
Thank you, Mister President, and, you know, this has been an issue that's been on the council agenda probably for the last several years, and it's an issue that I believe is one of the top three issues that I field as a member of the city council, and it's been, it's been very consistent over the years, the poor condition of our roads, and the fact that, in my opinion, the city really doesn't have a game plan on repairing the roads or replacing our roads. And I did a little homework and went into the engineering department last week, I went into the finance department to get a little information on really what we're doing as a community on our streets, and I found it pretty interesting, Mister President. First of all, a lion's share of the money we receive every year to do roadwork comes from the state, it comes from chapter ninety money. And many people at home may not know, but chapter ninety money is, it's a program that entitles municipalities to one hundred percent reimbursement of documented expenditures on approved projects for maintaining, repairing, improving, and constructing town and county ways and bridges. So we get roughly nine hundred thousand dollars a year through this chapter ninety money, earmarked to improvement of our roads. We also get, and it fluctuates year to year, we get money from the Office of Community Development for road repair, and that could vary from a hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand a year. So you're looking at roughly one point one million dollars a year allocation to improve our roads from the state and actually OCD, which comes from, I believe, the federal government. The allocation amount is based on three different factors. How many road miles do you have in your community? That weighs in at a fifty-eight point three three percent. So it's very important how many road miles you have in your community when they allocate this money through chapter ninety. Population is twenty point eight three percent of the formula, so your population size weighs in on how much money you get back. And the employment within the community, do you have high or low employment in the community, that weighs in also at twenty point eight three percent. So all those three factors will be what determines how the state allocates this chapter ninety money. And in two thousand eighteen, the governor is allocating two hundred million dollars for the entire state. Our allocation for the city of Medford, based on the three factors, we have ninety-one miles of road in our community, our population is roughly fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-three, and our employment is about eighteen thousand, four seven four in the community. So based on those numbers, where we average with all the other communities, we're receiving nine hundred and forty-four thousand, oh ninety-five, in dollars. Last year, we received nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, the prior year, FY sixteen, nine hundred and fifty thousand. So it's been very consistent over the years, and we move forward and we spend the money, and then we get reimbursed by the state through this chapter ninety money. The unfortunate thing about it, Mister President, is that's all we're putting towards the roads, whatever we get through chapter ninety, which is great, a hundred percent reimbursement, sign me up every year. But there's a problem with that. It's great that we get it, but it's not enough, and we've been doing this for years, and we know that our roads have not improved over the years. So it's clear to me, when you look at these figures, that we're never going to... So it's clear to me, when you look at these figures, that we're never going to get ahead of the game. We're always going to be chasing our tail on the roads. We have 730 streets in the city of Medford. Forty percent of them are private ways. So we have 292 private ways. Now, most people will say, "Ha ha, I live on a private way." Guess what? There's no [inaudible] living on a private way. It might [inaudible] because in certain circumstances, you may have to pay for [inaudible]. You may have to pay to have a tree limb taken down. You may have to pay to have a sidewalk done because you're on a private way, Mr. President. The rest of the roads, 400, are city streets, and that's 60 [inaudible] are city streets. So I took a look at the numbers over the last four and a half, close to five years, to try to get a picture on how many streets we're doing per year, and how much money are we getting from the state, and at what point are we going to be able to complete our streets? You know, we hear about complete streets all the time. That's the biggest misnomer ever, complete streets. We get $500,000, we do a few small projects, and we call it complete streets. I don't know what they're completed, but that's what we call it. So over the past four and a half years, we've paved altogether 30 streets in the city over four and a half years. I like to round it off to five years. Out of the 30 streets, nine were full streets where we ground the street down and repaved it. So we did nine full streets in almost five years. And the other 21 streets were partial. They went up 500 yards on a road, or they went from one intersection to the first intersection of the street. So they weren't full streets. But for my point, Mr. President, rather than trying to figure this out, I'm going to go based on the 30 streets. So this city does 30 streets every five years. So that's what, six streets a year, if you average it out. A street grind and repave, which we heard tonight in committee of the whole meeting, the repaving is not lost used to 2025. And that could be for increased traffic on our trucking on our street and pull of the tar, which we heard from DPW tonight. But a typical grind and pave will be 15 [inaudible]. So if you take this and largely go through it, if we continue to [inaudible] streets every five, after 20 years, we will have [inaudible] of the 438 streets. This, when we, at that point of after five years, and then after 20 years, [inaudible] would be working on 15 to 20. This, by address any of the private roads I'm talking about. So when you add in the other 300 roads, the figures that I'm coming out with are strictly only going based off the streets that aren't considered private, which is 438. According to, you know, Mr. President, we will never, ever, in the way we're spending, allocating money on our streets, we will never, ever get ahead on repaving our roads. We are always going to be catching up. We are always going to be doing our streets piecemeal. I asked the city engineers' office, can you provide me with a list, a working list, of the next priority of streets? I could not get one. I could get a list of the 30 streets that were done over the past four and a half years, but I couldn't get a street listing of what the next priorities are. And I think that's some of the frustration we're feeling behind this reel when residents come up and say, "You know, my street hasn't been looked at in six decades. Six decades." So, Mr. President, it's clear to me, in order to get ahead of the curve, we as a city can take advantage of the Chapter 90 money and the reimbursement, but we also have to put money, allocate money in our budget every year in DPW or engineering specifically for road repavement, Mr. President. And if we allocate an additional $1 million in that year, we go up from 28% of the streets that are being done in five years to 52% or 54, whatever the math comes out to. It has that much of an impact, adding another $1 million a year to our roads. So, you know, knowing it's the top, in my opinion, one of the top three priorities in this community, knowing that we're never going to get ahead from previous experience on the money we're receiving, that we need to do this, Mr. President. We as a council, during this year's budget, I'm sure other councils have other priorities, traffic engineer and a lot of other issues out there, but we as a council have to stand up as a body and say, "You know what? Based on the complaints we get, based on the poor condition of our streets, based on a number of issues, Madam Mayor, we need you to add an additional $1 million. $2 million would be even better. That'd be 75% of our roads. $3 million would be a panacea and bring us to a target level of completing all our streets after, you know, a certain number of years." That may not be realistic, Mr. President, but I think at least putting an additional $1 million. Now, we can all talk a big game when the residents come up, and we can sympathize, and we can cry crocodile tears when they come up and say, "Oh, my God, that's awful." But we have to do something as a council, Mr. President. We have to stand up and take action. And this is the only way it's going to happen. Have you ever heard anyone from the city administration step up and say, "We need more money for the roads"? Absolutely not, Mr. President. I've been on this council 16 years, Mr. President, and I've never heard one person from DPW, engineering, or the city administration ever step up and say, "You know what? Based on the poor condition of our roads, we need some additional funding." We've received a number of pitches via email because this was on the agenda, and the street [inaudible] that are sinking. By the way, the Chapter 90 money is used not just to repave, it's used for infrastructure improvements. So if you have a catch basin that's sinking, that money can be used to rebuild the catch basin. If you have a manhole cover that's sinking or has potholes all around it, that could be used to fix the manhole cover. You have curbing that's level with the street now, like Riverside Ave that I've been complaining about, Mr. President. When you drive down Riverside Ave, the curbing is level with the road. How unsafe is that? So these are the infrastructure improvements, Mr. President, along with sidewalks as well, that can be done with this money. And in my opinion, it's long overdue. It's a top issue in this community, public safety and roads, and we need to address it, Mr. President. Just to give people an idea what it costs, Sterns Ave in South Medford had their road repaved not too long ago. I think it was back in 2013. It was a few years back. And that street, which probably has maybe 12 homes the length of the street, maybe 13, cost the city $85,000 for full grind and a repave. So I think it puts it in perspective, knowing the size of that street and comparing it to other streets, that, you know, we can get through a lot of streets if we put the money towards it. We can accomplish our goals if we're able, Mr. President, to make this a priority, which it should be. You shouldn't have to use radar when you're running down the streets. I come down the streets, I know exactly where the potholes are. I go like, I drive, I know exactly where they are. I know where the manhole covers are too low. I know where all the bumps are. And it's a shame, Mr. President. That shows you how long that our roads have been inflicted with these ripples and potholes. So I would respectfully ask my colleagues, Mr. President, on a vote tonight, to ask the mayor, I know we just received some of our budget, and we got our budget book, and we're going to start meeting with department heads, that, and this is in the early stages of the budget, we haven't sat down at all yet, that a million dollars be appropriated, Mr. President, towards the repaving of our roads, and that we also have a systematic approach on priorities of roads that need to be repaired. So we don't have to go to the engineering office and say, "Well, we really don't have a list. It's done by calls that we receive, then we go out and look at them, and then if the mayor wants to do them, we get them done." Not, you know, there's really no list, Mr. President. There should be a list on the city website that any resident can go there and see if they're on the priority list, see where their street falls, and expect a date that their street may be done, Mr. President. This is not rocket science. And again, as I preference my remarks all the time, this is no reflection on a depleted DPW department. It's no reflection on the good work that they do, Mr. President. But clearly, you know, from past experience and from past knowledge, that we're going nowhere how we're currently operating with repaving our streets. And I offer this, Mr. President, as a way to have an approach that can address one of the top concerns from residents that contact me, phone me, email me, stop me at Stop &amp; Shop, or wherever else I am, about the condition of our roads. So I would ask that in a formal vote tonight, Mr. President, that we request the mayor put an additional $1 million in the paving budget for either DPW or engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Councilor Knight.
Mr. President, several months ago, this council voted on a resolution that I sponsored requesting that the DPW perform a complete assessments of our streets. And the resolution requested that they consider adopting new technology. And right now, there is an opportunity for the city of Medford to utilize infrared technology, and it pretty much is a truck that drives down the street and takes an X-ray of the road and uses infrared technology to determine the quality of the infrastructure below the ground, as well as the defects of the infrastructure above the ground, Mr. President. I've had the opportunity to take a look at one of these machines. A local business on Mystic Avenue, Millennium Power Sweeping, is in possession of one, and this tool can work miracles. It can repair potholes and do a whole entire assessment of the roadway, all in one fell swoop, Mr. President. I certainly think that this is a noble resolution. I don't know if a million bucks is going to be enough, Mr. President. And if we're going to be putting out a budget where we're looking to add $1 million to it, and this budget is funded by [inaudible], I think that it will be [inaudible] to [inaudible] the budget. If we're going to add a million, we should [inaudible] and also make this a zero-sum game. However, I can certainly understand the council's frustration, and I expressed [inaudible] in our subcommittee meeting this morning, our roads and the public [inaudible] practice perform. However, I would like to include in this resolution an amendment asking that, number one, the infrared technology be utilized. Two, I think that it's important...
[inaudible] to come in and maybe do a trial run with the truck.
I do believe that they've done that already, Mr. President. And I think that Millennium might have been utilized to do a test run, performing repairs to some cracks on some basketball courts to show how far along technologies come. So I certainly don't have a problem asking for a complete assessment. I think it's premature to request funding until we get the assessment done, because we really don't know what it's going to cost. I think Councilor Marks has done a great job putting this resolve together, and he's done a lot of homework on it. I'd like an opportunity to review the numbers a little further. I did get a response from the administration that it would cost about $7 million to pave our emergency arteries in their entirety. And the question comes is whether or not we can use taxation money to do that, or if there are other funding sources that are available to us as well. So I certainly can appreciate the resolution. However, for us right now to add a million dollars to the proposed budget, I think is premature. I think we should start our budget discussions and deliberations and find out where money's going. Based on last year's fiscal year budget, I think we have close to $600,500,000 of money that's used for contracted services, for services that could be performed in-house that's being performed out-house, for services that could go towards paying for salaries to replete the DPW staff. So there's a number of items that we need to look at, Mr. President, and this is a priority, but there are other priorities, as well as the council has noted. So I can certainly stand behind the resolution to ask for the assessment. However, at this point in time, I'd feel very uncomfortable requesting that a million dollars be added to the budget without further discussion, deliberation, and investigation.
Point of information, Mr. President. Point of information, Vice President Marks.
Well, the councilor mentioned that he asked for the assessment back several months. Did we get a copy of the assessment?
I believe we got it, we were supposed to get it on the 31st, but we haven't got it yet, according to the meeting that we did.
So we haven't got anything based on the resolution you offered?
I believe we got a response saying that they'll look into it, yeah.
Right. So we haven't got anything back. So in my opinion...
Well, we got a response back.
We can ask again, which is great. I have no problem asking again. But I think, you know, people are tired of hearing about the ask and want to see action. And I think asking for a million dollars in the budget is action, Mr. President. That will result in the repaving of streets and not just a proposal that's, I agree, and I voted for, the x-raying of streets and so forth, but I haven't seen a response back. So I'm not going to put too much credibility into that. I'd rather see some action.
Mr. President, we do have money that's already appropriated for the paving of Evan Street and Paris Street. I don't think we've seen that happen either, and the money's there.
Thank you. Name and address of the record, please.
Good evening. Joe Villione, 59 Garfield Ave, Medford. I want to thank the council vice president for bringing this very important issue up. If you drive on Route 60, right at the Park Street, there is a trolley track or a train track exposed in the road. Now, a couple of years back, in front of the Littlest Laundromat, which is diagonal to that, the street literally caved in. A big chunk of the street caved in. I don't know what's under Salem Street, but we do know that people from out of town use Exit 32 as a speedway to get to Malden and Revere because they don't want to go Route 16, which has about double the lights. I've counted them as I've encountered both roads. It's about double the lights on Route 16. And imagine what happens when the casino comes in. So they use Route 60, which I don't think is a federal road. I think it's a Medford road. The crosswalks are abysmal right now, again, and they were painted last year. So last summer, they were painted. This summer, they're fading. Tonight, both sides, they weren't going 20 miles an hour, which is the road, that's the speed limit. One car had to be going 55 miles an hour. They just fly by. And Councilor Delarussue had noted that he agreed Route 60 is a mess. So you have our infrastructure, you have the streets like this, you have people coming from out of town, and we have this mess that's on this main dragway, which is Route 60. Public access TV, of course, could expose a lot more of this, but I just want this council to be aware that there's, you know, speed bumps aren't going to help, and we can't put too many lights in. But there is a problem, and I'm wondering if any councilor knows how many times the city's been sued over broken roads. That's something to consider as well. So if we're getting sued over broken roads, if people are coming from out of town and zipping down 60, is that expense, could that be offset by paving that road in particular? Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address of the record, please.
Jean, News, 35 Paris Street, Medford. The last time we spoke about potholes, I told you all that I didn't know the last time Paris Street was paved. Someone reached out and advised me that the last time Paris Street was paved, they watched it from the window of the Curtis School as Beatlemania hit the United States in 1964. So that's the last time Paris Street was paved. So I'm not surprised to hear that within the next century, we may only see another 50 of Medford's roads attended to. I find it interesting that 30 roads have been done. And through the chair, I'd be curious to know if a single one on the north side of Medford has been done. Because I have said repeatedly that our side of the city has really seen no attention whatsoever, not roads, not sidewalks. So, but it sounds like maybe that's not a bad thing, based upon the committee of the whole meeting tonight, that we heard about the poor quality of the hot top and asphalt that is coming out, probably for any number of reasons. But 1964 was the last time Paris Street was paved, and we have not really had our potholes attended to. So I would love to see some additional funding put towards this. And I don't want to be greedy. I would even be happy with key cut, properly filled potholes, rather than potholes that have some attention given to them as a Band-Aid for the short term. So, you know, I think many people might say to spread that across a little bit more and have equitable repair of those potholes that are causing the most damage, you know. It doesn't all have to be in one place, certainly, but, you know, again, 1964 was the last time our street saw any attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address of the record, please.
Hi, I'm Shaw Rodriguez. I live at 281 Park Street.
I live at 281 Park Street. Our street was the fortunate benefactor of... About 13 years ago, we actually did get our street paved. So yay us. We have the school on our street, so I'm very happy about that. But I really hope that a million dollars is put into the budget for street paving, because it's nice to have ribbon cuttings. It's nice to add nice-to-haves to the city and beautiful parks and things. But we need the roads. The roads are what we use every single day. Every citizen in Medford needs the roads being repaired. My parents, Garfield Ave., they did have the cutouts done on their street, but they ran out of the asphalt halfway down, and the rest of the street wasn't repaired properly. So they had a serious disrepair. And anyone who knows any street, know that they're off in the heights yesterday, and I couldn't believe some of them... I was actually speaking to people earlier that it's like the surface of... So I really hope that some attention is given to our roads. This is a quality of life issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rob, 70... I want to thank Vice President Marks for bringing this up tonight. I mean, I don't know how many times I've been up here speaking about Evan Street. With all due respect, I respect the intentions of bringing in technology to look at the roads. But, you know, as Counselor Marks said, he's gotten, what, how many pictures came in? We... I think we know what the conditions of the roads and streets are. And to try to make it a little bit bigger of a picture, these kind of improvements go towards growing our community. We... I want more people to move and live in Medford. I mean, with the problems we're having with airplanes and everything else, more improvement on parks, which has actually been excellent in the last year and a half, I have to say. The park improvements have been good. But if we add this million dollars to further improve our city and make it aesthetically pleasing and get more people to move here, to make our community stronger, I think it would be great. And to make it a zero-sum game, I know the councilors and the administration, and a lot of people don't want to hear this, but perhaps a 20% reduction in certain pay grades might help to offset certain costs, so that we can make these improvements to make our city a much better place to live in, move to, raise a family, and improve our schools. I mean, the facade at Medford High School, I think, is still in need of a million-dollar repair, is the figure that I heard. I could be speaking out of turn. I don't know that exactly. But I do know it does need repairs. In moving forward, I would hope that when you look at this budget that you're going to debate, we look into certain areas that... Because I took a look at it before coming up here. You know, to see millions of dollars in the pay grades and having to beg for a necessity like streets and roads kind of makes no sense to the people that are at home watching, seeing their water taxes go up. Their property taxes go up every year, a surcharge on the property tax, the excise taxes that I think are specifically supposed to be used for street and road improvements. And what are we getting for it? A city councilor who has to bring up, again, for how many years now, a simple thing like fixing the streets and roads to make, you know, Medford strong. Take that slogan off of a T-shirt. Let's put it into reality. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. On the motion.
Motion, Mr. Vice President.
Do you want... Name and address for the record, please.
Nathan Merrick, 373 Riverside Ave., Medford, Mass. Thank you, Counselor Marks, for... Vice President Marks, for bringing up this issue. And as a resident on Riverside Ave., I can personally attest that the curbs are very low. Back in 2014, in October, a car drove through my front yard, took out my fence, and hit the steps at what was the RE/MAX building on the corner of Riverside and Locust. So there is a need. Also, for the record, I'm sure you're all aware, that Wegmans is going to be open soon. So in terms of prioritization, maybe when these big projects are happening and you know that, hey, a place like that's going to open, if you're going to choose to repair roads, it may be a good time to do that and a bad time. You just talked a lot about the inconvenience on Boston Ave., you know, to the residents there. Well, what do you think's going to happen when Wegmans opens up? There won't be a good time to fix Riverside Ave. for a very long time. Finally, as far as how to come up with a million dollars. So I see that... And I know this is kind of further in business, but, you know, the city is looking to raise $1 million ahead of time from our water bills, a notice I got in the mail the other day. We can come up with a million bucks. Mayor Burke is also asking for, what, $900,000 for a leak detection system? That's a million dollars. So you could say no to that, and there's a million bucks. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion by Counselor Vice President Marks, seconded by...
Motion, Mr. Vice President.
Motion by Counselor Knight DeSova. Name and address for the record, please.
Castaneda, Cushion Street. This gentleman brought up a corner location where a car went through his fence and onto the corner location. I believe it was called RE/MAX, which also my memory. I believe Counselor Penta had said long back, we should have used money to buy that corner piece of real estate when it was for sale, especially now with more tractor trailers trying to navigate that turn. Very dangerous. And in hindsight, I believe the gentleman was right in the past.
Thank you. On the motion that asks to be severed by Counselor Knight.
Mr. President.
Counselor Longo Kern.
Thank you, President Carvajal. I'll be brief. I think we are very frustrated with the state of our roads. I've voiced my opinion the last several weeks. Luckily, we did have a meeting with the DPW director and head of DPW this evening, and it is discouraging. They're working... The crews are out there, they said, on a daily basis, working to repair our roads and fix potholes and try to fix manhole covers. I see the patches all over the place, and there... The complaints, from what I understand, are 60 recent complaints on see, click, fix, just for potholes. And I specifically asked, are we working just with regards to the potholes on complaint basis? And that's the state that we're in. We're understaffed, and we're working just on complaints. Now, there are potholes and problems all over our streets. And to go into Evan Street and Paris Street, there's many other roads that need resurfacing. So I think what we're hearing tonight is we have a budget to review and a request for a million dollars. And I think that comes from frustration, and I, too, am very frustrated. So whether it's a million dollars or half a million, or even just a plan to be put in place, that we're doing more than five streets a year, from what I understand through Counsel Marks's research, we need more. We need to have more in this budget. And there is... There are places that you can trim. There are a number of different things that can be done. We have $9 million in free cash. We should be committing every year to put more than $950,000 into repaving and fixing our streets. And that's the bottom line. So whether we vote for a million tonight, or we discuss it at budget time, I'm in support of putting more than what Chapter 90 funds allows us to put into our streets. We, as a city, are taxing our residents on every level. We need to be able to give them a safe, proper place to drive. That is the bottom line, and I appreciate the resolution and see where it goes. But the bottom line is we need to dedicate more time, whether that's hiring more manpower, buying more fill. Things need to be done that are not being done now.
Thank you. Counselor Scott Pelley.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate Counselor Marks for bringing this up, because it is the number-one concern we have in our community. If... In a daily basis, I think that most communities don't go to the city council meetings and put potholes on their agenda. So I feel for that. But I think that going through the budget and being fiscally responsible to what we see, because I don't want to be in a position where we're being held accountable for losing other city necessities. So I think it's important that the budget season comes up. I'm supporting Counselor Marks's process that during the budget time, I will stand by him with the million or more and looking into other avenues as free cash. But until we have that budget meeting, I think it's important that we hear what is upon us in the next week. I know that Saturday, I believe, is going to be a very interesting day, a long day, but it's going to be... It's going to be something that I think all of us have heard, and all of us sitting at a table would really stress the fact that streets and our roads are going to be our number one, one of our number-one priorities, so.
Thank you. Counselor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I appreciate my colleagues' comments. That's remember, this council cannot add to the city budget. This is a request by the council based on years of previous experience that we can't continue to operate the way we're doing business and expect our roads to get completed, Mr. President. That's all this is, to open up dialogue and discussion. So don't be, you know, hell-bent on, oh, a million dollars. It's to open up discussion and dialogue and to let the mayor know that there's a need in this community, Mr. President. You know, Counselor Longo Kern talked about, we have $8,239,000 in free cash. That could be used for roads, Mr. President. We have linkage money. We're one of just a few communities in the entire state that, when development comes in over a certain size, whether it's a rehab, a new development, we charge a certain percentage to linkage for infrastructure improvements, like the gentleman that lives on Riverside Ave. said. Wouldn't that be a novelty? You know, when Wegmans comes in, because they're going to pay linkage to this community, that a certain percent goes to the infrastructure around that particular area to improve access and to improve pedestrian safety, Mr. President? So there's plenty of money available. So don't get caught up on whether or not a million dollars, or we're going to have to cut something. No, we're not talking about cuts at all. We want to present this to the mayor, saying, Madam Mayor, whether it's through linkage, free certified free cash, or any other venue that you can think of, we need to do a better job. And as I mentioned earlier, the $950,000 we receive every year in Chapter 90 money is just not footing the bill in this community. And it's evident. It's evident. These streets are the worst I've seen in my... I don't want to date myself now, but I've been driving 30 years on these streets, Mr. President. And they're the worst I've ever seen. There's a problem, and it exists, and we have to address it. And we can ask for all the reports and all the different studies, but you know what? That's take some action. Let's put money in the budget. Let's get money out of certified free cash and move forward. Let's get a list of priorities and start moving forward on these streets. And rather than see six a year, Mr. President, let's look at 15 to 20 streets a year. Then we'll make some headway and get ahead of ourselves, Mr. President. So that's why it was offered tonight, Mr. President. I'm not asking anyone behind this reel to make decisions tonight on cutting out something within the budget. No, this is to start discussion and dialogue. This, in my opinion, is warranted, and I have the proof. I'll send my council colleagues the emails I've received from pitches around the community. And I ask, Mr. President, for support of this tonight, to send a message, a shot across the bow, and to let her know that we're serious about this. And it's not going to just be another rubber stamp on the FY '18 budget. This council wants some action and some results, Mr. President. You yourself said we've had more community, the whole meetings and subcommittee meetings, and pushed more new ordinances forward. Let's also get some results when it comes to infrastructure in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Counselor Falco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to thank Counselor Marks for bringing this resolution forward. And I think it's important, you're right, it is important, to open the dialogue and to talk about issues like this. This is an issue that impacts every neighborhood throughout this city. There are... The roads are in terrible condition, and not all the roads, but, you know, a great percentage of them are in pretty bad shape. And we need to... I definitely would support an audit on the roads and prioritizing, you know, reconstructing some of the roads and resurfacing some of the roads. I also believe that, you know, the states, if we're getting money from Chapter 90 funding for, you know, rehabilitating the roads, and if we're getting funding from... Some funding from the federal government through OCD funds, you know, we probably should be actually taking some money from the city. You know, we should try to take a look to see if there is any money in available accounts to put it towards the roads. We should be investing in ourselves. And, you know, if there are surplus funds that we could take, that we could take, and maybe it's not a million dollars, but maybe it's a start, maybe we can find some funding, then maybe we should do that. But I think it is, you know, something that we should take a look at. You know, we should be willing to reinvest in our city. I mean, you know, we get state funding, we get federal funding. Let's take a look at, you know, what we have here to see what we can actually put into reinvesting in ourselves, reinvesting in our city and making it a better place and making better neighborhoods with smoother roads and improving the quality of life. So I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Falco. I recently went to a meeting somewhere in the mayor of another city. That was exactly what they said. It's time that we start reinvesting in our own community. All right. On the motion by Counselor Knight, that we investigate using infrared technology for our roads. A motion by Counselor Knight, seconded by... We're severing all the motions. We're severing that from the...
Why don't you make a B paper or something?
Want to make it a B paper?
Those are amendments to...
They're amendments to...
They're amendments to the paper.
Yeah. We're going to look at it, and then we're going to break up your million dollars, and then we'll take up the original paper.
Go on, Mr. President.
Counselor Knight.
I will be happy to withdraw my amendment and put it in as a B paper.
Okay. All right. On motion by Counselor Marks.
You're still severing all the amendments, so it's just being still...
You want to sever that for a B paper or a... To the motion.
Mine's a big motion.
Oh, no, but you're...
Mine's a big motion.
Your million dollars.
He amended it.
You're asking for the million dollars.
Right, that's a big...
That's a separate paper. That's a separate...
That's part of my motion.
It's not in the motion.
I know. I amended it.
So that's a...
So amended.
So you amended. All right. As amended by Counselor Marks to add... That we look into adding $1 million to the budget for the roads and as amended by Counselor Knight, that we use infrared technology on the roads.
Mr. President, our motion is settled. It's still standing on the line.
On the original motion by Counselor Marks.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Longo Kern. All those in favor?
Aye. Roll call vote.
Roll call vote has been requested. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is on the main resolution. Am I correct?
That's correct. As amended.
No, it's not. You just severed it. Yes, you severed it. So actually, you're supposed to take up the amendment first, you know?
Okay, we'll take up the amendment first, which is?
$1 million.
Right, that's what we just voted on now.
That's correct. So on the motion, Counselor Marks's request for $1 million, a roll call vote has been requested. Counselor Delarusso.
Yes.
Counselor Falco.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
No.
Counselor Longo Kern.
Yes.
Vice President Marks.
Yes.
Who? Scott Pelley. Counselor Scott Pelley. This is for asking...
The amendment.
It's for the amendment to...
A million dollars.
That we investigate where to get a million dollars. Discussion for a million dollars.
It's asking a million dollars in the budget. That's a request.
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 Request that we add a million dollars to the budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
President Carvajal.
Yes. Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Motion passes. Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, motion passes. On the original motion.
Main motion.
On the main motion by Counselor Marks, seconded by.
Seconded.
By Counselor Knight, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. And.
Using infrared technology.
And on the motion by Counselor Knight to use infrared technology, motion by Counselor Knight, seconded by, by Counselor Delarussue, all those in favor?
Mr. President?
Just, just before.
Counselor, Vice President Marks.
So, do, do we know what this is going to cost, the infrared technology?
We do know, we're investigating.
We're investigating.
We're investigating.
So, so what, so what is, what is the resolution?
That we investigate using.
What is the amendment?
Uh, technology.
Right, because, right. If he could clarify, because, because I, we voted on that thing not too long ago.
Counselor Knight.
The, the amendment would be that the city can utilize the newest technology that's out there, which is the infrared tech, the infrared technology, just similar to the same way we request the city to use.
So it is a request of expenditure. He's asking for the city to use this infrared technology.
To evaluate the, yeah, to evaluate.
What if that costs $3 million a year to do the infrared technology?
Then the response back would be, it'll cost $3 million a year to do it.
No, you, you asked them to use that during the assessment. Right? Did you just say, I, I asked them?
To evaluate the utilization.
And, and use infrared, you said, during the assessment.
To evaluate the utilization.
To evaluate the use of it.
To evaluate the utilization.
Well, you're changing, you're changing.
Just kind of like your resolution, yeah.
No, you're changing it now.
Ultimately, it was to a guy who wanted to use. Same resolution we put forward before. Same resolution we all voted for before.
All, on, motion by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Delarussue, all those in favor? Aye.
The chair seems to be in doubt. I don't, I only hear two ayes.
Withdraw the amendment, withdraw the B paper.
Counselor Knight has asked that we withdraw the B paper. Thank you, Counselor Knight. Seventeen, five oh six, offered by Counselor Knight.
At this point in time, I'd also like to move to withdraw this paper. I've had a correspondence with our city council liaison, Ms. Felch, and she and I have scheduled a meeting to sit down and further discuss the C.Click fixed documents. Upon receipt, I'll be happy to.
We're removing seventeen, five zero six.
Upon receipt, I'll be happy to share the information with my council colleagues. I'd like to thank Ms. Felch for her proactive response to my resolution and also her assistance in resolving a couple of issues.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. President, long run, the president for our business, may we take up communications from the mayor?
I am just about ready to get, get, get on to that. But before we do that, I want to let you know that there's been a slight change to our summer schedule for the meeting. We will be meeting on July 18th and August 15th in the new media center at the high school, where we'll, we'll have the ability to take the meeting and show it at a later date, and maybe, if she's ready by then, we may be able to be live, but I wouldn't count on that at this moment. I had the opportunity to go up there yesterday for a press conference, it's a very nice room, and I think it'll serve our council well, that we do the meeting, those two meetings there, and I think everybody will be happy. So please take note of the, of the changes, the change of location and the date.
Mr. President, let me show reverse nine one one goes up, warning people that, that'll be in front of, for those two particular dates.
Hey, we'll, we'll speak to the mayor about having Mr. Clemente do reverse nine one one to that. Mr. Clerk, if you could make that notation there? All right, petitions. Communications are from the mayor. Seventeen, five one two, dear Mr. President and councilors, I submit herewith for your approval, the fiscal 2018 budget for the City of Methode for the period of July 1st of 2017 to June 30th, 2018.
Mr. President, if you would, may I suggest that you give a brief synopsis in the way of reading?
I will give a brief synopsis in the way of the reading. The total submitted appropriations will cover municipal salaries and expenses, including those of the Methode School Department, our municipal departments, 106,86,337. School department, 56,431, 56,431,000, for a total of 161,117,437 dollars.
Mr. President, motion to table to the conclusion of the budget.
On the motion by Counselor Knight to table to the conclusion of the budget, seconded by Counselor, all those in favor? Motion passes. Uh, let's see. Seventeen, five, and city councilors, I respectfully request and recommend that your honorable body appropriate $188,400 from the sale of lost engraved accounts to the cemetery department account. This recommended appropriation is requested in accordance with the fiscal '18 budget. The cemetery department salary account is reduced each year in anticipation of an appropriation from sales of lots. In addition, I respectfully request and recommend that your honorable body appropriate $1861 of annual care to the cemetery department expense budget. This recommended, recommended in accordance with the fiscal 2018 budget. The cemetery expense, expense budget is reduced each year in anticipation of appropriation from, in anticipation of upcoming budget hearings, I respectfully request that this be forwarded to the committee of the whole hearing, yours truly, Stephanie M. Burke, Mayor.
Mr. President, motion to refer to the committee of the whole.
On the motion by Counselor Knight to refer this to the committee of the whole, seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley, all those in favor? Motion passes.
As opposed.
Please mark, President, uh, should we, Counselor Delarussue, as opposed. Seventeen, five one four, dear Mr. Presidents and city councilors, I respectfully request and recommend that your honorable body approve the following transfer, $900,000 to be transferred from water retained earnings to account 3404505780000008672017 Water Capital Project. The amount of $900,000 is requested to purchase a water main leak detection system, as was displayed in the meeting earlier this year with the Water and Sewer Commissioners. We strongly believe that this purchase will not only save dollars, but in this, but this commodity, I respectfully request that the paper be forwarded to the council of the whole for deliberation during the budget process. The remaining balance in the retained water and earnings after the transfer will be
Mr. President, motion to refer to the committee of the whole.
Motion by Counselor Knight, seconded by.
Seconded.
By Counselor Falco, to move this to a committee of the whole meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vice President Marks.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. This is a very important issue that leak detection, this council's been discussing for a number of years, due to the high water and sewer rates in this community. Not only leak detection, but INI, inflow, my, my mic's not on, Mr. President.
Mine is, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's, that's all right, Mr. President. So, so this is an important issue, Mr. President, that this council has been discussing for a number of years, leak detection in the community. We've also discussed INI, inflow and infiltration. It's costing the ratepayers of this community millions of dollars a year based on water that's leaking in our old outdated water pipes that are underground. A little known fact, Mr. President, about 90% of the water leaks never surface. So you may think, well, if we have water leaks, we're going to see water leaking down streets and so forth. 90% of the water never surfaces. According to the MWRA, 17 to 20% of the water used in Methode each year is unaccounted for water that's lost to leakage. So you can imagine that figure. 17 to 20% is water that's unaccounted. It's not me or anyone else's. The new system, which I went some six months, at the time, the company claimed, in five years, Methode could save about $5 million with this leak detection system and save up to 15 million gallons of water annually by installing this system. It's, in my opinion, Mr. President, a no-brainer. It's long overdue in this community. I believe it's money well-spent that, over the years, will find its way to the ratepayer, and we can actually start seeing potentially a savings when it comes to our, our water and sewer bill, or at least not see the steady increases that we've grown accustomed to. Additionally, Mr. President, that with this particular leak detection, what we were told by, is that you need appropriate staff to monitor this system. And, right, as we all know, we, we don't have the appropriate staff to do so. So I'm hoping, which will accompany this paper, also an additional request for staff, Mr. President. The way the system works, and I think it's appropriate people in this community know, is that the company, whoever gets selected, would install an acoustic whistling device on the water mains and the gap valves between streets. They would be spaced out in a big grid across the city. The company would listen to the device overnight, and there's, and they could tell where the leaks are coming from by taking samples of the acoustic sounds and pinpointing within a couple of feet where we have leaks in the community, and then be able to prioritize those leaks and address them. And hopefully, over time, we'll be addressing and lowering the percentage of unaccounted for water within our community. So I've been pushing for leak detection for a number of years. INI, inflow and infiltration is a whole other thing in the community, which is another issue I've been pushing for, Mr. President. That's groundwater that's seeping into our sewer system and being treated as raw sewage, which is costing the ratepayers of this community tens of millions of dollars a year. The one thing I would ask, Mr. President, that my colleagues consider, is that currently right now, the school system and the city do not pay for their water. It is not included in the operating budget for the schools and for the city. Anyone knows, any homeowner knows, when you have your budget, you look at your car insurance, you look at your groceries, and water and sewer is part of your budget. It's part of operating, so you can flush your toilet, take showers, water your lawn, it's part of the budget. In our city, for some reason, not part of the budget. And guess what? When it's not part of the budget, Mr. President, what happens? You tend not to conserve. Doesn't matter how much water I'm using, the ratepayers will pay for that. Doesn't matter. We'll just add it on to the ratepayers. They'll grin and bear it and take it, Mr. President. You know, if these buildings are mated, it should be part of the overall working budget. It should be part of the budget, Mr. President. It shouldn't be outside of a budget. And in order to make this system work, we have to account for every entity in this community, and that includes the school system and also the municipal buildings. And there's no reason why, Mr. President, where those buildings are mated, that we're not accounting for them in the budget. When I was on the school committee back some years ago, it was part of the operating budget. And then Mayor McGlynn, because he found out a good way of shifting it off of the Prop Two and a Half within the budget, and said, I could put that within the ratepayers and also increase my budget on other things that I want to do. And, Mr. President, it shouldn't work that way. Just recently, the administration asked us to combine the Water and Sewer Enterprise Account. Why? Because it was easy for accounting for them. So why would they approach us and say, you know what? We also want to make sure that our buildings that are already mated, that we include them in the budget. I'm telling you right now, Mr. President, there are several issues that, if they're not addressed in this budget, like I did last year, and I know Counselor Longo, I will not support this budget. I will not support it, Mr. President. The mayor will have to account on the other members. But unless we hold our feet, Mr. President, to the fire, and make sure we address these issues and not just give lip service, that's the time to do it. So, Mr. President, I support this wholeheartedly. I would hope that we also have a discussion on staffing to be able to look at these leaks and instantaneously get a report to show where these leaks are, and also, Mr. President, that, once again, the school side and the municipal side include the water and sewer within their budgeting process.
Move the question.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Counselor Knight.
Your light was on. Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Name and address of the record, please.
Andrew Castaneda, Cushion Street, Methode, Mass. On a positive note, I'd like to thank all you councilors, the mayor, all the salaried employees, and especially the volunteers for doing all the hard work and trying to improve our city. Thank you very much. And as far as saving taxpayers' money on the water, it sounds really good to me. Trust is good, but verify would be better. The city is strongly believing this device or system will not only save taxpayers' money, and it may be a good idea, but verifying if it's historically a fact and true is a better, I believe, and a must idea before spending almost a million dollars of a people's money. Is it a wise purchase? Does it work? So like, who, what cities have bought this system in the last three years? And can we call them and ask if they saved any money? And how much, please? I also recollect the new water meters, they're probably 10 to 15 years old, and there's supposed to be all kinds of bells and whistles, and I believe in those meters. I believe one of the councils I brought up, and I'm not sure if that saved us any money. But I'd like to see, from past experiences, who has bought this around our locale under the MWRA system, if they, in fact, really did save, or did it, did they not save and they, and they spent a million dollars or whatever, and was it cost-effective, period? Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address of the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rob Caputi, 71 Evans Street. I want to thank you all for this discussion. I, I think this is one of the biggest pebbles in the pond. When, when we're paying for water that, that falls out of the sky, I mean, look at it from the perspective of, of the businesses who might have to raise their prices a little bit for goods and services, excuse me, other residents who, like the city treasurer said before this council a, a couple months ago, and talking about going after delinquent taxpayers, she said it's not fair to the residents who are, quote, sacrificing new cars in, in vacations. Well, well, why do you think that is? It's because they're paying for water that literally falls out of the sky. Is, is, is God going to be charged this new connectivity tax? I don't think so. The Methode residents and businesses are. And it, it would help the, the overall local community to, to really get a grasp on this before, and, and not just keep letting it, letting it go. I mean, businesses are losing in this square so much money because of that Craddock Bridge. I know one proprietor, since it's happened, has, has lost close to a million dollars in business. When you add these taxes and fees on it, I mean, it, it becomes a, a priority that, that really shouldn't just let slip through your fingers and get away. I respectfully request that, that you get a, a firm grasp on this and, and, and get the job done, please, sooner than later. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. On the motion by Counselor Knight, that we just be sent to the committee of the whole, seconded by, by Counselor Delarussue, all those in favor? Motion passes. Before we, I think that's it, before we finish up Thursday, there will be the Dog Park at the Riverbend will be, the ground bacon will be there at 1:00 PM for anyone who wants to attend, something that's, that was supported by Vice President Marks very highly, and it will be coming to fruition. The records of the.
Mr. President, just before we call the records.
Vice President Marks.
If we could, Mr. President, a longtime Methode resident just recently passed away. Dr. William Wood passed away, Mr. President. He was very active in this community, a big advocate for the disabled community, and I would ask that we have a moment of silence.
I agree. Please rise. Records of the meeting of May 3rd. I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Name and address of the record.
Castaneda, Cushion. Someone brought up, there's a meeting coming up, what was that meeting?
The, the.
The Dog Park. I think it's 1:00 PM.
1:00 PM.
And that's behind the Dog O'Andrews, I presume?
Yes.
Okay.
The McGlynn.
Behind the McGlynn? Okay. Also, I think there's two other meetings, anyone-
The, the Riverbend Park is at seven-
Thursday, Thursday.
Riverbend Park is at 7 o'clock.
I'm sorry?
Riverbend Park is at 7 o'clock.
The Bike Path?
And for the Bike Path.
Air, and that-
That's at the, I think it's at the Andrews.
It's also, okay, at the Andrews. And also, I believe there's some, my friend Captain Barry Clemente called about some, the final traffic meeting, possible citywide trap, permanent pattern.
On Thursday night, it's a very busy night.
So Thursday night, Thursday night's meeting is about the last meeting for the proposed possible citywide or part of the citywide resident parking only.
Parking, yes.
Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And what time is that and what location, sir?
That, I don't even call, at the, at the, at the senior center, I think it's 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, an hour before the Bike Path Riverside Bend.
Budget your time properly.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Counselor Falco.
Hi, it is the monthly police community meeting, and this month it is actually back at the Methode Police Station.
And what day is that, Mr. President?
That's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow at 6-
Tomorrow at the police station.
7 PM for anyone that's interested, coming up with a schedule of neighborhood dates beginning in September, we'll be coming up with that schedule soon.
Thank you. Counselor Scott Pelley.
I yield to the podium first, if you can.
Thank you.
Name and address of the record, please.
Gnuzo, 35 Para Street. If we're going to list off meetings tomorrow, I'd just like to remind everyone, tomorrow night is the ZBA, 252 Main Street and 49 Pleasant Street, and I think there's one other, but I can't recall, or on the-
Thank you.
And the Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
From Ackland Road.
Thank you. These things are all posted on the city website, so if everybody looks, they can find them there, you know?
Mr. President, I just wanted to, to thank the city administration, the mayor's office for an unbelievable community day this Sunday. The weather was great.
Yes, it was.
The, the thousands of people that attended had nothing but positive things to say, so I just want to thank, a hundred, I think hundreds of thousands, I just want to thank them. Thank you, Mr. Counselor Marks, yeah, he just reminded me, hundreds of thousands, so thank you. That was a wonderful event.
Thank you. The records were passed to Counselor Longo Kern. How did you find those records?
In order, please.
What?
In order, please.
On the motion by Counselor Longo Kern, that the records are approved, seconded by Counselor Knight, all those in favor? Motion passes. Motion by Counselor Knight for approval, seconded by Counselor Falco, all those in favor? Do you get your turn?